This time I would like to call to order the Monday, February 17th, 2014 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. At 6:00 PM we had a joint work session with the Tourism Advisory Board. This time I'd like to call on Reverend Daniel Burge with New Life Church to lead us in dedication as well as to pledge allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Father God, we love you tonight. We thank you that we can gather freely as a people to discuss things. Father, we thank you that your presence is here. We invoke the power of the Holy Spirit, Lord God, as we work through issues tonight that involve our county and its citizens. Father, we also thank you for a wonderful service, military, those men and women who faithfully serve you. We are thankful for them. We are proud of them. Father, we ask your blessing and protection upon them. Father, I thank you for these commissioners tonight, and we give you praise for their service. And so, Lord God, we thank you in all things. And we ask this in the wonderful and precious name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Burge. At this time, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a change in the agenda. On item PB 13-12, Moyoc Commons, I would like to continue that to allow additional time for the board and public to review the preliminary drainage impact studies submitted by the applicant's engineer. I know the public hasn't had a chance to look at this, and before we vote this thing up or down, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this until the first meeting in March.
So we have a motion for approval of the agenda with the...
13-12, the Moyoc Commons.
Have a motion for approval. Second. Have a second and a further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, we're going to go to public comment. We have public hearings tonight, and I'm going to ask everyone to stick to the three-minute time. Our attorney will be taking that time. And as we go through some of these public hearings, if somebody in front of you has signed up and said what you want to say, it's perfectly okay to say, "I agree with the previous spokesperson." So with that, our first person is Ms. Mary Etheridge. Owen Up, as always, please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846 Shawboro Road in Shawboro. My family and I have been involved in litigation with the county after four of the sitting county commissioners, Mr. O'Neil, Mr. Adlett, Mr. Petry, and Ms. Gilbert, approved a junkyard to be located on 1.1 acres in the Shawboro neighborhood. Not one entity in the county recommended approval, but they approved it anyway. Since today is President's Day, I thought it only fitting that I reflect on a few quotes that interesting facts contributed to these great men whose birthdays we are celebrating today. George Washington said, "Truth will ultimately prevail where there is pain to bring it to light." He also said, "The administration of justice is the firmest pillar of our government." But did you know that Washington, one of our founding fathers of our nation, lost more battles than he ever won? But we all know that it was his leadership that helped secure Americans' independence. And old honest Abe said, "These men asked for just the same thing, fairness and fairness only." He also said during his famous Gettysburg Address, and also engraved on his monument in Washington, "Government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from this earth." But how many of you know that Lincoln also said, "How many legs does a dog have if you call the tail a leg?" Well, it's four. Calling a tail a leg doesn't make it a leg. So commissioners, I don't care what you call it, how you try to spend it, or how you try to justify your unfairness shown to my family. Approving a junkyard in a neighborhood against everyone's recommendations was certainly not just, not fair, and certainly not government for the people of Currituck County. And residents of Currituck County, please don't think this would never happen to you or in your neighborhood, because never in my wildest dreams did I ever think that I would fight my own county government, because I always thought government was to serve the people. But quoting a county commissioner, we can do anything we want. So thank you and happy President's Day.
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge. Next, we have Peter M. Thornton.
My name is Peter M. Thornton. I live at 108 South Landing Drive here in Moyoc. Whatever you approve of, I hope that you're keeping safety in mind. And by meaning safety, as we grow, we're going to need a safety center for a police department, for a fire department. The new equipment that they're going to get into the fire department cannot be housed in the houses that it is now. The other thing is, our roads are bad. We need transportation. We have rail out there. We don't have park and ride, but we do have rail. We do have park and ride in Food Lion's parking lot. At any time, given time, Food Lion can say, "I want those cars out of there." $140 to tow them out, and they'll go out. The towing outfits down here, they don't hesitate a minute. I've been in Norfolk. I misread the signs. My car goes. $140 bucks. We need some kind of public rail down here. We do have public rail. And at one time, back in the county, we had public rail. We had a railroad station right here in Moyoc. This town was not called Moyoc. It was called Shingle Landing. The railroad station was Moyoc. And I'd like to see the county and whatever you approve of have in mind and set aside land that we can use as we grow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Will Krotick. I live at 182 Bromley Road, North Island, North Carolina. And I'm here to talk about the Currituck County school system and its operating budget of $39 million.
She's trying to get it and cut it off.
And, oh, pardon me. So I'd like to talk about the $39 million school budget. And since I've been here last, I have attended a school board meeting, and I have voiced my concerns. So I'm going to just kind of try to keep that portion shortened. We have an operating budget of $39 million. Thirty percent of it is paid for by the county, approximately $11.34 million. We have 14 combination classes countywide. That could be remedied at the expense of $400,000 for eight teachers, meaning instead of having two curriculums taught by one instructor, we could have one instructor per curriculum for 1% of the current operating budget. 1% of the current operating budget. And we are not finding a way or getting together, like I'm happy that everybody here got together about this, to get the most bang for our buck. Every one of you, every one of you, everyone that's not here that's a taxpayer, citizen, parent, or grandparent ought to be very concerned that the top two administrators working for the school system carry away nearly $250,000. We are not getting the best bang for our buck. They make the budget. Why are they not having an instructor per curriculum and then build the budget around it, I ask? Only to be told, "Well, the state and the federal government, they're cutting budgets." We have to make an investment, just like I heard you guys talking earlier about $10 million and making investments for tourism. A mere $400,000 to make one of the most valuable investments in a child's life, a high-quality education, don't be mistook. I'm not saying that what the teachers are doing with what they're dealt with currently with their budget restraints aren't doing all they can do and aren't doing a good job. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, why not improve on it? Why not give our kids or grandkids and the future kids better than we had? Why are we still working on models 25, 30, and 40 years old? Why are we not giving them the best bang for our buck? I mean, I'm just, I'm very troubled by this. I cannot fathom how you can't see that the investment of this $400,000 is going to have magnifying returns. Okay? We must have an epidemic with children needing foster care. This came home in my elementary school student's son's folder. All I'm saying is, it's a good program, but maybe if we start them young, start these kids young with one instructor, maybe they won't have some of the same problems that they're faced with today. Maybe their children won't have some of the same problems. However...
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, can I wrap this up, sir? I would say this, though. Outside of the school issue, this is a two-hour class. To get somebody over the course of about six meetings eligible to be a foster care parent, I think it's wonderful. However, they're having to offer a free dinner with each training session. Is that what we really want coming in there, like a timeshare, to get qualified to be a foster parent? Thank you.
Thank you. Just so there is...
Please, Ray, if anybody doesn't want a teacher, stand. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, please.
And I've had twenty emails, I think we've heard about twenty, but we...
Yes, sir.
...two-hour conversations that my sister currently teaches a combination class, and I don't want to air off her salary, but she's taught for Currituck County Schools for 21 years. She doesn't even make $40,000 a year. She'll probably be mad if she watches this on YouTube, but, you know, she cares. We have a great school system here. I believe he agrees. You know, he has some issues with the combination classes. Like I said, it's a school board thing, and we've talked, and I personally went to every elementary school, have talked to somebody at every elementary school except for North Island, which I told him I would do. Not that it was our job to do as commissioners, but I'm doing it because I have kids and I'm a parent.
But they... My mic's not on. Sorry about that. But like I said, I think the, I mean, the education that the kids are getting in Currituck County here, and I went here, and I went to college, and I have college degrees, I think the education here, exception of maybe a private school where you're spending, you know, our class sizes are small, I mean, I think they're getting a quality education. You know, and the higher-ups, I think, do a good job. I know you threw something out there about their salaries. You know, they care. And the current superintendent, I think she makes about $35,000 a year, less than the last one did. And I may be wrong on that, but...
Sir, I'm talking about it better than what they have. I'm talking about two instructors versus one. And your emails actually said that it will get more one-on-one time as a result of having one instructor per two curriculums. I find that mathematically impossible. Somebody, please show me the math.
Mr. Krotick.
Yes, sir.
Let me, I want to make sure everyone in here understands, this is a school issue. The Board of Commissioners do not set policy for the schools. I can sit here and agree with you all night long, and it doesn't change the policy of the schools. The school board is duly elected. Our forefathers set up a delineation of duties. We have certain duties. They have certain duties. Your issue is with the school system. The Board of Commissioners cannot address your issue.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate that. However, they are citizens. I'm informing you as citizens, and I'm informing these people as citizens, and anybody that might watch on the screen. And what I'm attempting to do is get everyone that wants the most bang for the buck. It's that simple.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That is all I had signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who did not get to speak at this time? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment, move to the next agenda item, is a presentation of U.S. Tennis Association grant check. I'm not sure who is going to be... Who is it going to?
It's going to me.
Parks and Rec. Good.
Yeah. Turn this, sorry.
Go right ahead.
I'm podium challenged.
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight to present you with some money. My name is Kelly Gaines. I am the Executive Director for the United States Tennis Association here in North Carolina. And we have a really unique opportunity. USTA has developed a program called USTA Facility Assistance, where we go into communities that will also put some skin in the game and try to refurbish courts to help our kids and all of our citizens play the lifetime healthy sport that tennis is. And so tonight, we have a special presentation. And Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to come around and get it, or if Jason wants to, however you want to do...
Jason.
How about you might want some money?
Always want money.
Well, we have a check for $50,000. Forty thousand of this comes straight from the United States Tennis Association in New York City, and the other 20,000 comes from us, USTA North Carolina, to help you all promote and develop tennis here. And I think it's great we have such a good turnout, so we've already got a good start for beginner programs. But we thank you so much for taking the time to invest in tennis. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Don't do that.
I'm Jason Weeks, Currituck Parks and Recreation Director, and I would like to thank USTA and North Carolina USTA for their assistance. We were, Vic is Mr. Ramsey, he's pastor up in Moyoc, and he's also our high school tennis coach, as well as, well, he's involved heavily with the Tennis Association. And he came to me fussing at me, talking about the conditions of the courts and all he was getting on them. And so we decided it was time, they'd been there 26 years or so at the high school, and they were getting in pretty bad shape. So we decided that we were going to reconstruct them, and the UST has stepped up big time for us and saved us a lot of money. So thanks to you guys, thanks to Vic and the Tennis Association, as well as high schools for being very cooperative. I think we have some of the nicest courts that you'll see in this area. It's six tennis courts now, and everything meets USTA standards, so we're real proud of what we have, and just thank you guys for helping the county out. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
As Jason said, I'm Vic Ramsey, and I'm the high school tennis coach. I'm here on behalf of our Tennis Association and on behalf of the school to thank you for your support of the tennis program by providing the rest of the funding that made the reconstruction project possible. Just to give you a little background, our Tennis Association runs both a summer and a winter instructional program for children and youth and adults. We sponsor a benefit tournament every year to help raise awareness about drunk driving and to fund a scholarship in the memory of Eva Lane, who was a Currituck County high school tennis player and graduate who was killed on 168 by a drunk driver 10 years ago. We sponsor in the spring a Women's USTA League team for adults. And of course, we have our two high school teams, which engage about 30 kids over the course of a given year, and they compete with the other high schools in our conference. I understand that as the courts were being constructed, that you received a few comments about the color scheme, that didn't understand why the courts were blue when the school colors are red and black. And I'm here tonight simply to say that that blue with some sort of green background or a lighter blue background has become the industry standard. And if you watch the U.S. Open or the Australian Open, or if you go to any of the courts that have been recently refinished in our area, you will find the same color scheme. I'm also told that our football coach, even though green is not a school color, intends to keep the football field green. So that's the deal. As it happens, tonight is the scheduled meeting of our Tennis Association, and at the conclusion of our presentation, we're going to adjourn to the conference room down the hall and make some plans for this spring and this summer. We have a number of folks who are here, some in the back as well, who have children or who themselves are involved in the tennis program in the county, and we express together our appreciation for your support. There are a lot of people we'd like to thank. Of course, we'd like to thank you first and foremost for providing the funding. Jason Weeks and Dan Scanlon took this project seriously when it was just a fuss, and I appreciate that very, very much. And they advocated for the project's conclusion in your budget, and I appreciate that very, very much. Eric Weatherly, Michelle Perry, and Willis Simmons oversaw the project's construction last summer and fall. John Oles and the Carolina Club, and Tony Willingham and Westside Athletic Club provided court space and time for our high school team while the courts were under reconstruction, and we appreciate that. And of course, Kelly Gaines and Robin Jones and many, many others with the North Carolina Tennis Association and the USTA provided their technical assistance as well as the grant which you have received tonight. Tennis is a test on many levels. It's a physical test of athleticism and skill. It's a test of diligence, because learning the skills to compete in tennis takes time, often many years of consistent practice. It's an emotional test, because maintaining poise under pressure and keeping one's temper when one makes silly, unforced mistakes is crucial to success on the court. It's an intellectual test, because tennis players are required to adjust tactics and strategy to changing conditions and the strengths and weaknesses of one's opponent, and often to do so without the aid of a coach or advisor. And it is a test of character, for a tennis player is required to be not just the player, but also the scorekeeper and the referee. And it takes integrity to call lines against oneself in the heat of battle. So for all of these reasons, tennis is a vehicle not just of fun and pleasure, but of character development and personal growth. A child who takes the time and makes the sacrifices to learn this game and who plays this game competitively will discover, as I did some 40 years ago as a teenager, that you do a lot of growing up on a tennis court. And we are committed, those of us in the Tennis Association and in the Recreation Department, we are committed to ensuring that the next generation of children and youth in our county get that same opportunity, and we thank you very much for the tool with which to make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. At this time, we're going to move to our public hearings. The first one is PB 1317, Moyoc Crossing, request for preliminary plat, special use permit for 90 residential lots and a conservation subdivision located in Moyoc on the north side of Shingle Landing Road, approximately 260 feet east of Fox Lane, Tax Map 9, Parcel 41, Moyoc Township. I was not present at the first hearing of this special use permit.
Mr. Chairman, before going into that, I'd like to make a comment and go on record to state, I've had people contact me and emails, phone calls, and I have not entertained or engaged in any kind of discussion with anyone in regards to this subject that we're, or the hearing that we're going to need to continue. So I just wanted to go on record to state that. And Mr. McCree, if you will kind of follow up with that as far as the citizens, that, you know, as commissioners, we can't entertain conversation or dialogue on an open session. So I've, you know, cut some people off when they've called me to discuss that, so I just want to go on record that I have not, so that I can have an objective on this topic tonight.
Thank you. This will, did I finish? Feet east of Fox Lane, Tax Map 9, Parcel 41, Moyoc. I did finish that. This is a continuation of a special use permit. I was not present at the last meeting. I will tell you that this is an evidentiary phase of this public hearing. Comments, you need to be sworn if you wish to speak. I'm going to do one swearing in, and you're going to have to sign up on the list so that we can have your name to call it forward for when you have evidence to present. I'm going to call the names of the people that I have signed up. One is Bob Crocker, Eldon Miller III, Joe Drago, Joanna Gormenes, Wendy Shannon, and Bobby Glormin. That's who I have signed up. If anyone other than these folks wish to speak, you need to come forward now, sign up on this sheet, and be sworn in.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the applicant does have some witnesses that may need to...
They need to...
Either you want to sign the sheet, or they'll be brought up during their case, but whichever you prefer.
I would like a written record of everyone that's going to speak. We can swear everybody in, then you can sign it afterwards. So I'm going to ask you to place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you, God.
I do.
You are now sworn. Anyone that came forward that wasn't signed up, please sign that sheet. During the evidentiary portion of this meeting, I believe the applicant is represented by legal counsel. So during that portion of the hearing, Mr. McCree is going to represent the Board of Commissioners during that portion of the special use permit. Can I ask that you give the list to Mr. McCree? There's, all right, there's one on here that signed up in this public comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to have Mr. McCree to also explain the process for this...
He is. He's also going to explain the process that we have to go through and what we have to consider for a special use permit, and he also will keep the time.
If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I would go ahead and begin.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But before we begin, I think it'd be helpful to explain and remind the board again what the role in which you sit, as well as to help the public understand that you are seeing tonight differently than the public may see you on other occasions. Unlike a legislative decision, such as when the board is considering a zoning text or zoning map amendment, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, where the board will be sitting, much like a trial court, and will be receiving and can only consider... public health or safety, the special use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. I think it's important to note here with regard to harmony. The law of North Carolina is such that if a county zoning ordinance, and in our case, a Unified Development Ordinance, provides that a use is permitted by right in a certain zoning district, or if the use is permitted by special use permit, meaning the use is permitted with additional conditions placed upon it so as to defer or deflect any potential impact on that use to surrounding properties, then it is deemed to be, is presumed, to be a use that is in harmony with the surrounding area. And so, because there is a presumption that that use is in harmony, it is incumbent upon those who are opposed to the particular use and to the special use permit in particular to present evidence to show why the use is not in harmony. The next finding the Board has to make is the special use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans of the county, and lastly, that the special use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. As I said a moment ago, the Board, again, will be sitting as a quasi-judicial body, and that means, under state law, that the Board of Commissioners is required to comply with the procedural rules, much like a trial court, and to provide for the constitutional right to due process, such as sworn testimony of witnesses. And of course, we've already gone through swearing in witnesses or be presenting testimony to you. There can be no reliance by the Board upon hearsay testimony for a critical finding of fact, and there must be allowed for the direct and cross-examination of witnesses. The Board of Commissioners's findings must be supported by competent material and substantial evidence presented during the course of the hearing. Competent evidence is generally understood to mean that evidence which is legally admissible in a court of law. However, pursuant to Section 160A-393 of the North Carolina General Statutes, the requirement for competent evidence does not preclude reliance by the Board of Commissioners on evidence that would not be admissible in a court of law if two things exist, one of two things exists. The evidence was admitted without objection, or the evidence appears to be sufficiently trustworthy and admitted under such circumstances that it was reasonable for the Board of Commissioners to rely upon it. As further provided by Section 160A-393 of the North Carolina General Statutes, competent evidence does not include, does not include, the opinion testimony of lay witnesses as to any of the following issues. Number one, the use of property in a particular way would affect the value of other property. The increase in vehicular traffic... Number two, the increase in vehicular traffic resulting from a proposed development would pose a danger to the public safety. And number three, matters about which only expert testimony would generally be admissible under rules of evidence applicable to the trial court. In addition, the Board may not make a critical finding based solely on hearsay. Hearsay means a statement not made at the hearing that the proponent seeks to have admitted as evidence of the truth of the matter asserted in that statement. A witness or expert needs to be present, so questions can be asked about the particulars of their statement. An example of what hearsay testimony might be is a petition, which is not valid evidence that can be considered in making a finding. Letters also would be considered hearsay unless the right, the author of the letter is present and can be questioned as to the opinions expressed and set forth in their letter. The burden of presenting a complete application required by the UDO to the Board of Commissioners is upon the applicant. But once a completed application has been submitted, the burden of presenting evidence to the Board of Commissioners sufficient to lead the Board to conclude that the application should be denied shall be upon the party's urging denial, unless information presented by the applicant in its application and at the time of hearing is sufficient to justify a reasonable conclusion that there is a reason existing to deny the application. Some other points. Again, as I mentioned a moment ago, it is required that there be the opportunity for the applicant or others to cross-examine witnesses. It's not meant to intimidate or harass someone, but to fully elicit from witnesses and examine facts presented by a witness to the end of providing the Board of Commissioners with the best evidence available. There may be objections made during the course of the hearing by the applicant's attorney. That, again, is appropriate and proper, if there is some evidence that is being presented that, again, is hearsay or otherwise not competent, because there may well be a record made in case this matter has to go another step. We will then proceed in the following manner tonight. I will call on planning staff, Mr. Woody, to present a case analysis. Then the applicant will have the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Woody. The applicant will then have the opportunity to present their case. There will then be the opportunity for the public testimony in favor or in opposition to the application. The applicant will, in the course of that proceeding, have the opportunity to ask questions of those witnesses, again, to elicit reasons or the basis behind their opinions or statements to the Board of Commissioners. During all of this, the Board of Commissioners, obviously, as a finder of fact, has the opportunity as well to ask questions of witnesses, to, again, elicit the basis for statements made to the Board during the course of the hearing. Thereafter, the applicant will have the ability to rebut any evidence that has been presented during the course of the hearing, and then there will be the opportunity, again, for the Board to ask questions. The evidentiary phase will be closed, and then the Board may deliberate and make its decision. With that, I will then call on Mr. Woody to present the case analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. And as the Board is aware, this case was...
I'd like to ask everyone to cut their cell phones off, please. Or at least put them on vibrate. Thank you.
This case was before you for a public hearing at your January 6, 2014, meeting. So, I am not going to go through the case analysis in full detail, since we've done that once previously last month. But what I will do is hit the highlights, and one of the things that was identified in that January meeting was staff to look at a couple of items through a compatibility analysis, which we've done. That is in your staff report. I will cover that in some detail. So, let me get into this. The property is currently zoned, single-family mainland. The property originally was zoned agricultural, and it was rezoned to residential on September 18, 2006. So, since 2006, it's had this zoning designation, and what's before you tonight is an application for a conservation subdivision, which is allowed in the zoning district with the issuance of a special use permit, which Mr. McCree just covered in his presentation. Land use plan designates this area as full service primarily. You can see along the wetlands or the border of Shingle Landing Creek, there is some area designated as rural, but at the 58-acre site, 47 acres of it is full-service designation. As currently proposed, the project includes 90 lots. 90 lots on 58 acres is a gross density of approximately 1.55 acres per unit. Again, that number is a gross density, which incorporates the entirety of the site. This project does provide 23.36 acres of open space. The conservation subdivision requires 40% open space, so it's basically providing open space in accordance with the ordinance. It's proposed to be served by water and sewer service for this particular project, and what I'll do is I'll go ahead and jump into the compatibility analysis real quickly. And at the January 6 meeting, when the Board requested staff to provide some information, it was basically centered around adjoining development patterns, transportation, and stormwater. Those are the three topics that I kind of took out of the last meeting, as the Board requiring more information owns. So, I'll get into the development pattern. So, what we did as staff was we looked at, in the Moyoc Township, we looked at improved residential lots. So, what I'm saying is, if a lot had a residential house on it, that was a lot that was incorporated in this data. If the lot did not have a residential house, or if the lot was vacant, it was not incorporated in this data. So, again, the data resource, the best we could do really is pull lots that had a residential structure on the lots. And what we did is we basically took the lot sizes, that seemed to be a discussion point at the last meeting, and we looked at the average or the typical size of lots within one-half mile of the subject property, and then we did it again within one mile of the subject property, and then we did it again for the whole Moyoc Township. And in your staff report, in your case analysis, there's a couple of tables that gives a really detailed breakdown of these lot size ranges. I'm not going to read them verbatim, but I'm going to go through them real quickly. When you look at the subdivision, the tract of land, you can see on the map on your screen in purple, the light blue circle that surrounds that map is a one-half mile radius. Within that one-half mile radius, and again, this is improved residential lots, there are a total of 315. So, you've got 315 improved residential lots. Of those 315, 21% are one-half acre or smaller in size. So, about a fifth of the lots are less than a half acre in size. Of that number, about 62% were between one-half acre and one acre in size. So, what that tells you is, within a half mile, the improved lots that are one acre or less in size are about 83% of the lots. Everything else remaining would be larger than one acre. So, if you look on that map, you can then see the green circle. The green circle indicates a one-mile radius. So, we did the same exercise again. Within one mile of this development site, there are 595 lots, and that's including the lots within a half mile, too. So, I'm cumulative in this next series of numbers. Of that one-mile radius, there were 13% of the lots that were a half acre or smaller in size. 59% of the lots were between one-half acre and one acre in size. So, as a total, 72% of the lots within a mile are one acre or smaller in size. So, again, you can see if you, as you stretch out from the core of Moyoc, you start to see an increasing number of larger lots, which makes sense, because we're getting away from the center of Moyoc. And finally, we looked at the township, and that's a big, big tract, big, big area of land to consider. But basically, in the Moyoc Township, there are 2,241 lots that are improved with the residential structure. Of those 2,241, 26% are one-half acre or less in size. So, about a quarter of the lots with the residential structure are less than a half acre. 41% are between one-half and one acre in size. So, again, as a total, that tells you that 67% of the lots in the Moyoc Township that have an improved residential structure are one acre or less in size. And of course, that number, again, it declines as you move away from the center, because as you move away from the center, you obviously get larger, you get three-acre and 10-acre subdivisions. So, that's kind of an analysis of the lot sizes that are present in close proximity to the development parcel, and then in a broader sense in the Moyoc Township. Any questions on that?
Just, I'd just clarify, just when you started, you, I think you indicated it was 1.5 acre per unit, and it's actually 1.55 units per acre.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, let me clarify. The density, the gross density is 1.55 dwelling units per acre. And gross density means you take the upland and the wetland, and you get 58 acres, and you have 1.55 units per acre. Thank you. Important correction. Traffic, so we've, staff looked at traffic, and what we did is we relied on NC DOT data, and I want to go through that real quickly. The annual average daily traffic count is a number that's put up by NC DOT every year. They'll lay counters out, and they'll count the number of car trips, car trips that go down the road, and they take an annual average daily traffic. So, that's not just a Monday or just a July Saturday, that's the average daily traffic capacity. I can't tell you exactly how they compute that number, it's complicated, but it is a standard number that DOT uses. And what we looked at was some of the surrounding points in close proximity to the subdivision, and I'll go through those numbers real quickly. And I'm going to go back to an aerial photograph for this one. Primarily 168, there were three points we looked at in close proximity on 168. The annual average daily traffic count on 168 is between 17,000 and 21,000 cars per day. The capacity of NC DOT is 37,600 trips per day. So, obviously, NC 168, so it certainly is not at capacity for the AADT. We also looked, there was a count available for Camelia Road, near the Shingle Landing Road intersection, so kind of in the area close to the Shingle Landing Bridge. That 2012 traffic count had an average daily count of 380 trips, not a whole lot. There's not a capacity available for that road, but I'm sure it's more than 380. And then finally, we looked at Tolles Creek Road, east of the Shingle Landing Road intersection, another kind of feeder road to this development. That had an annual average daily traffic count of 4,200 cars in 2011, and the capacity of Tolles Creek Road is 8,000 trips. So, again, all those traffic counts were under the capacity of the roads. Now, obviously, at some point, those roads will become capacity. And to give the context of this development, Haman Arobe, in their application, estimates that this development at Build Out will generate 552 daily trips. So, not a whole lot in terms of those broader numbers for the roads. Now, I'll say, we looked at some data from the planning perspective, some other sources for trip counts. A lot of, I think it's possible that subdivision could generate more trips, but not necessarily a lot more than that. So, I do think that 552 is a reasonable number for that subdivision in terms of trips it generates. And again, you've got to put that in the context of the capacity of the surrounding roads. Any questions on that?
Yes. The capacity of the road is what, again?
The capacity of NC 168 is 37,600...
The Shingle Landing Road.
The capacity, well, the closest we had was Camelia Road, and there's not, DOT has not stated a capacity for Shingle Landing roads. I do not have a number for that.
Okay. On Shingle Landing Road, we've got 90 lots, right?
Proposing 90 lots, yes.
Right, okay. And is there an average number of cars per house that is used as the industry standard, one and a half cars per house?
Not an average number of cars, but there's an average number of trips. A trip is when you leave in your car, that's one trip.
Okay, but I'm trying to think of, if you just had one, one car...
And the average number of trips is between four and nine for a single-family dwelling.
Per day?
Per day.
Between four and nine. So, we've got 360 trips added to that, minimum.
And that's the 552 would be a number that is basically falling within that average of four to nine trips per day.
That's per house?
Four to nine trips per day, per house. Is it typically the standard number of trips for a single-family dwelling?
So, we're looking at 360 trips per day. Four to nine is 36.
Well, Haman Arobe, in their application, estimates 552 daily trips per day for the subdivision at Build Out.
I know. But the capacity, again, I'm sorry, the capacity, again, using another road was what? I'm trying to compare, not this road, but familiar with...
Tolles Creek, for example, Tolles Creek Road has a capacity of 8,000 trips per day. It currently carries 4,200 trips per day.
That, Tolles Creek, but that's not the Shingle Landing...
I don't have, DOT does not publish a capacity for Shingle Landing Road. I don't have that data.
Did we require a traffic study?
We did not. That is not a requirement of the ordinance.
Well, the other thing, too, Shingle Landing Road, and some people in here might not know, I mean, when they changed with the school, how you come into the elementary school, some of that was off of Tolles Creek Road, they changed the entrance, DOT did, to take less off of Shingle Landing, which Shingle Landing, the school, is now 255 Shingle Landing Road, before it used to be Tolles Creek Road.
Well, I'm just looking at 360 trips, and you've got to turn left or right. You go to right, you got, you got a stop sign, and we're talking about traffic on the highway, having to stop, look left, so I'm wondering if they're going to back up here. The other way is to go in front of the school, stop sign, Tolles Creek Road, and go up to the traffic light and sit across the railroad tracks. So, I'm looking at 360 trips a day, added to that narrow road. Okay, 500, yeah. I'm thinking, you know, maybe a traffic study, I don't know. That's fine.
Any other questions on the traffic counts? If not, I'll move on. The last thing that staff looked at was stormwater. And I went and met with the Technical Review Committee staff to talk about stormwater, and the consensus on that was that the ordinance requirements that we currently have in place should effectively manage the stormwater for this property. And two things I'll point out about this property, perhaps that are different than some of the other ones you've seen, is, number one is, it's adjacent to Shingle Landing Creek, so it's going to, it's going to, it's going to convey stormwater directly to an outfall, basically. So, there's not a lot of culverts or things that's got to travel through the water to get to the outfall. And number two is, in terms of Moyoc, the soils aren't good, but in terms of the site, there's not bad soils on this site. So, staff, the Technical Review Committee felt like stormwater was manageable on this site for the development. And that was the three things we looked at for the compatibility analysis. some of the other ones you've seen, is number one is, it's adjacent to Single Landing Creek, so it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna convey stormwater directly to an outfall, basically. So there's not a lot of culverts or things that's got to travel through the water to get to the outfall. And number two is, in terms of Moyauk, the soils aren't good, but in terms of the site, there's not bad soils on this site. So staff, the technical review committee felt like stormwater was manageable on this site for the development. And that was the three things we looked at for the compatibility analysis. Addition, excuse me, yes, sir.
To go back, when you said that there were 20%, 26% of the homes within a half mile were of one-half acre or less, is that true?
Yeah, 21% of the homes within a half mile.
21%.
Yeah. The 26% was for the entire township, but yeah.
26% for the entire township. So that means 74% is over a half acre.
That's, that's correct.
So when you start talking compatibility, how do those numbers work? I would think if something is 74% over a half acre, then that 26% would show that it is not compatible to that township.
And again, those are just raw data that staff provided, and I guess there's variable ways you can interpret those. I don't have a industry standard for how to apply when that percentage is compatible or not, but I didn't want to share the raw data for the board's consideration.
Well, I mean, just for compatibility, that's what I'm looking at.
I understand.
The, and I need some guidance here. And I mean, is, you know, are we looking 21% at least 79% of homes that are in that area within a half mile are a half acre or larger? I'm looking for compatibility here. Would this have an impact on the other homeowners in this area? And from your count there, it seems that it would. Am I right or wrong, sir? Could you answer that, or would you even try?
I'm not sure I can answer that. Again, it's raw data, and there's some interpretation to it. And I don't have an industry, industry standard I can cite to say that 26, 26% is compatible and 20's not, so.
So I am charged with finding compatibility, but I have to do it in such a way that it would be used as evidence?
Yes.
And so, I'm stuck.
I have a question, a follow-up on the compatibility myself. When were the bulk of those 21% smaller lots approved? None in recent memory, I wouldn't think, not many anyways.
Anecdotally, I don't have the number, but I would agree that most of the smaller lots are probably older subdivisions.
Years ago.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, far as like the, so DOT, you said, Single Landing Road, and I work in Moyauk seven days a week, I'm in Moyauk seven days a week. Single Landing Road's probably a mile and some change, correct? I know Monday through Friday at school times, you have probably 125, probably to a 150 vehicles that drop kids off at school Monday through Friday, 15 buses, 50 staff members, so forth and so on. So I know during the week, you know, you're probably having on that little mile and so stretch, probably 700, 700 to 900 cars a day already on that little mile and some change, if I'm not correct. But like I said, you don't have any data from DOT.
I don't, I don't, I just don't have a traffic count for Single Landing Road. And I went back probably 10 years, and I just don't have one for that.
Yeah, and which, I mean, they changed too on that, because that used Tolles Creek would, was part of Tolles Creek Road when they would come down to the school.
The both, the best I could do is get traffic counts and DOT volumes for the streets that would feed, for this neighborhood to feed into, which is Tolles Creek, the highway, and we did have one on Camelia, yeah.
And Camelia has two parts, which I might not know.
It does, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I don't, and this count was on the eastern part, on the east side of the highway, the 380.
By the school.
Yeah.
Question, if we ask for a traffic study, that's not unheard of. I think when we did the development over on Knott's Island, there was question of.
Traffic safety study, yeah.
Yeah, traffic safety study. So if we asked for that, that wouldn't be unheard of.
We've had applicants do traffic studies in the past, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the last thing I'll point out, and not necessarily what I'm going to present, but at your places, each of your places, I put a copy of a letter from the applicant, on behalf of the applicant, and a map attached to it, where they have outlined some of the changes they would like to propose based on testimony and comments given at the last meeting. So those are in front of you for your information. I think the applicant would be better suited to present those to you tonight, so I wanted to let you know that is in front of you. And that concludes my presentation.
Any other questions from the board members, from Mr. Woody?
I do have one.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Woody, I was on the board when this tract of land was originally rezoned, and it was presented to build, I believe it was 39 single-family homes on that tract of land. Did we, in fact, approve a special use permit for that 39 homes?
I don't know that we, I don't know that it ever got that far. I think it got a sketch plan approval.
The rezoning was done by previous.
Yeah, the rezoning was those six, so certainly, 2006, Board of Commissioners approved a rezoning, but I do not recall if that actually got to a use permit approval. It may have, I can, I can check while we're.
Well, if it got to a special use permit approval, would that be valid today?
If it were approved, it would be valid for a time period of two years.
Unless it was renewed.
Unless it was renewed, I certainly don't, I don't think it was renewed, or unless infrastructure was installed, or certain cost of the project was installed. So it could be valid, but most likely, you know, we know infrastructure wasn't installed, so if it wasn't renewed, it's probably expired at this, I'm sure it's expired at this point, actually.
Okay, but an existing special use permit, the Board of Commissioners is not obligated to accept an amendment to an existing special use permit, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I think it's prudent that we make sure whether a special use permit is, in fact, in existence on this property. It probably is not, but I think it's prudent that we establish that as part of the evidence that, in fact, if it is valid, the board would not be obligated to approve any changes. Correct?
That's correct.
That's all I have.
If nothing further from the board, would the applicant like to cross-examine Mr. Woody?
I'm Robyn Curran, 127 West Target Street in Raleigh, and I'm representing the applicant. I just had a couple of follow-up questions from Mr. Woody. When your staff received this application, did they do an analysis of the four special use factors?
They did.
And based on that analysis, was it your conclusion, or your staff's conclusion, that those four factors were met?
It was.
And then with respect to, there were some questions about the rezoning. That was, that was what's known as a general use rezoning, is that correct?
That's correct.
So right now, with the rezoning alone, there's no minimum lot, number of lots?
That's correct.
Okay. And I don't, and you don't know for sure whether there's a special use permit at this time?
I do not.
Now, with respect to the traffic, as a part of your compatibility study, you actually went to NC, the NC DOT numbers, and to determine whether or not this project would cause the capacity to be exceeded?
That is correct.
And based on the information you got from NC DOT, the conclusion is that the numbers submitted by the applicant would not cause that capacity to be exceeded?
That is correct.
Okay, and with respect to stormwater, just quickly, the UDO has a, has a very strict stormwater, very strict stormwater provisions, is that correct?
I would, I would say so, for Currituck, yes, for this area of the state.
And if this project were to be approved, it would have to comply with the stormwater ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct.
And under your stormwater ordinance, the pre, post-development runoff cannot exceed the pre-development runoff, is that correct?
Yeah, and actually, the, the post-development runoff would, would actually be less than the pre-development runoff in some instances.
So as far as stormwater control, this project, if approved, would improve the stormwater conditions, is that correct?
I don't know if I'll say it'll improve the stormwater conditions, but it certainly shouldn't contribute or worsen the conditions.
So at a minimum, it would be the same?
Yes, if, if designed according to the UDO, that is correct.
Now, could this project ever be developed fully or constructed if it did not comply with the UDO stormwater requirements?
No.
And that's not done at this time, that review by your office is not done at this time, is that correct?
It's, it's correct.
That'll be done at a, if this, but this is a use hearing, is that correct?
Preliminary plat use permit, construction details, and engineering is reviewed by the technical review committee at the construction drawings submitted, which follows this.
And so, until that time, there would be no reason to prepare those, those drawings?
Not, not as a submitted requirement of the preliminary plat, no.
And at that time, if the applicant does not comply, then he cannot go forward, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. McCree, I have a question.
Yes.
Is the Board of Commissioners bound to make this decision based on Mr. Woody's and his staff's exclusive recommendations? Or can we accept outside evidence that's contrary to what our staff has approved?
No, as, as the finder of fact, it is your responsibility to receive all evidence in the course of this proceeding and to weigh it.
I just wanted.
As it relates to each of the four conclusions that you have to make.
I just wanted to get that on record.
But again, you must rely upon competent material, substantial evidence that, that is presented during the course of this hearing. If nothing else, thank you.
Follow-up question. Mr. Woody, the traffic study was on a, a like road, like Kinden Road, it wasn't this road, is that right? It was another road?
The NC DOT traffic, traffic counts were taken from NC 168, Tolles Creek Road, and Camelia.
Okay.
Why did they, why, I mean, why, why was there not one done on Single Landing?
I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, I know we've talked before, there's, there's, there's a possible three exits for somebody, if, if they lived in the subdivision to come out, they could go out at Camelia, they could go out at the stop sign across from Hardee's, or they could go south and come out at Tolles Creek Road, which, nobody's going to go south to go, to go north, that's just not going to happen. But I mean, you're, you're looking at probably, I don't remember what your number was on Tolles Creek Road, but you're looking at probably 13, I mean, if there was 90 complete, you're looking at probably 1300 to 1500 trips a day on that road, especially Monday through Friday.
From this development, or?
Well, currently, what you have from school time to the other ti, like I said, I personally, I mean, I mean, I think we need a traffic study. I personally have worked probably 25 wrecks in a 13-year career on those two exits, as well as a couple at the one south.
As staff, I was, I was careful not to make a lot of assumptions about the data, I tried just to present it, and what I've done is presented DOT capacities and DOT traffic counts.
What was it on Tolles Creek?
Tolles Creek, the capacity was 8,000 trips per day. The actual existing counts were 4,200.
And that Tolles Creek Road is 10 miles, roughly?
This, this was the count done near that intersection of Single Landing Road, just east of it.
Oh, okay. I thought you were saying the whole Tolles Creek Road.
You don't have the date that these counts were done either.
2012.
You have a year.
Oh, the date.
There's a big difference in a count done in June and one done in July, I mean, in, in December.
No, but they, they do them multiple times over the year.
Or on a Saturday versus a Monday.
Mr. Woody, ask a question. You got how many trips on Tolles Creek Road?
4,200 in 2012.
My, what comes to mind is, how many people make a right turn, go in front of, on, on Single Landing Road, rather than go to the traffic light?
Yeah, again, I didn't make assumptions on, on traffic behavior, I just took the counts and provided them.
Not many.
Not many people use that shortcut?
Not many. I mean, I mean, there's probably a few, I mean, like I said, I work those roads all the time. I mean, it's, you know, and coming out at that stop sign across from Hardee's, you know, I mean, we've had some, some severe, severe accidents.
I know, but my question is, is how much load does that put on?
Oh, it'll be huge, especially at that stop sign.
Okay, and because one of the, one of the, the arguments that we, not arguments, but discussions we've had, is putting an extra traffic light, we tried to get DOT to put one at Moyauk Landing Road at the entrance of Single Landing, because of traffic. So I can imagine the stop sign, that's.
Like I said, I mean, that'd be a DOT study thing, I don't, you know, I mean, I just, I'm there seven days a week.
Continue, Mr. McCree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If nothing else from staff analysis, then Ms. Curran, you may present the applicant's case.
Thank you. Good evening, I appreciate being here tonight. What I'd like to do is to just quickly go over some general, the general requirements of the ordinance, and present some changes that our clients have submitted to make, some new conditions that they've, and changes that they have agreed to make, and then call the witnesses. So if I could just do that very quickly. This is a conservation subdivision, which is allowed by your ordinance with a special use permit. And as, I think, probably deduced from my questions of Mr. Woody, this is a special use permit, so this is a use hearing. The details as far as the development come up later in the process. The reason that you're here is even though it's a subdivision, it's a special use permit because there's over 20 lots. Your ordinance specifically says that conservation subdivisions are allowed up to two units an acre, and this average of this particular project is 1.53. With respect to the four requirements, I want to just go through those quickly, and what we believe the evidence is that establishes, establishes each one of those. The first is, it will not endanger the public health and safety. What the evidence, that, there's a couple of issues that have come up. One of them, of course, has to do with the traffic, which you have just questioned Mr. Woody about. I do want to say that our, the applicant is willing to make a condition of approval, the, he'll do a traffic study. So if this is approved, it can be conditioned on the applicant actually conducting a traffic study for this area. The numbers that you have in front of you now, however, establish that there's not going to be excess traffic at Build Out. I want to, one of our witnesses will also testify that NC DOT has got to review this project in order for them to get a driveway permit, and that they will not be able to get that permission from NC DOT if there are any traffic issues. With respect to the stormwater, I think Mr. Woody has testified about that, and so will our engineer, that because you have such a stringent stormwater ordinance, which you have, you have drafted and approved, that this will not cause an increase in stormwater. With respect to the cross-access, which was something that came up at the last hearing, we, we have looked at the, at the, at the comments that have come from the public, and from the neighbors, and from the last video, and have tried to make some adjustments to this plan that deal with that. Now, with respect to the cross-access, what Mr. Woody has put up on, on the board here, let me just go back, you have a letter in front of you that we submitted to the planning department last week. And what this is, is it, it has four additional conditions that have not been in front of you in the past, that we would offer in order to mitigate any concerns that might be going on. Now, the first one has to do with the sewer connection, and there was some issue or some questions whether that sewer would go through Single Landing. And what we have done on this particular plan is to redirect that sewer, so it goes down the public right-of-way. So now, there will not be any question, there will not go into Single Landing, there won't be any, any private easements that have to be obtained. So that particular issue has been dealt with through an amendment to the plan. Now, the second thing has to do with the cross-access. The original plan showed an access through, to cut through Single Landing. Now, Mr. Woody likes that access, he has advocated for it very strongly. Apparently, the neighbors do not want that access. The applicant, it does not care one way or the other, he's glad to give it to you, or he's glad not to have it. So as a part of the new conditions that we've submitted, which is a part of this letter, is what the applicant would like to do, is to dedicate to the county the land necessary to make that connection, and to pay a bond that would allow the, the money necessary to make that, to allow you to go through that, but to leave that in your hands. In other words, we're giving you the land and the money that will allow that cross-access to occur, but if you decide that it's not necessary at this time, or it will be problematic to the neighbors, then it does not have to be done. The last change that has been made is, there was some concern about the number of lots over there, thank you, that were, was adjoining the Single Landing subdivision. Originally, it was nine right there, and the planning board said, that's too many, can you cut it to five? So that was done, and since the last hearing, those, that number has been reduced one more time to four. So right now, all of those lots which adjoin the subdivision next door are now all over a half an acre. So they are not less than a half acre, they are the largest lots. And the other last thing, the condition that's been added, is that there is a 15-foot So they are not less than a half acre, they are the largest lots. And the other last thing, the condition that's been added, is that there is a fifteen-foot planted buffer that will be dedicated and will be actually a part of the homeowners association or the open space with planted, an oplac planted buffer that will be evergreen trees, at least, that'll be fifteen feet wide and grow at least twenty feet. So those are new things since the last hearing, that the applicant has heard the, the neighbors and said, okay, I understand you want larger lots on that side, we've done that, you don't want to see this subdivision that will put a buffer, you don't want us to go through, you don't want a cross-access, we'll give you the money and the ability to do it, for the county to do it, but leave that in the commissioner's hands and to change the, the direction of the sewer. Now, with respect to harmony, which I wanted to speak to that very quickly, there's actually two components of the second requirement, and one is that it cannot injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands. We have with us tonight an expert in valuation who will testify, he's done a study, he has analyzed the data and come to the conclusion that there will not be a decrease in value. The second is actually harmony. We are using the word compatibility a lot, but the actual standard is harmony, and if you read it for what it actually says, is that there must be harmony of the use with the area. It's not harmony of the lot size, it's not harmony of the house size, or what it looks like, it's harmony of the use. And this use is a single-family dwelling subdivision, which is exactly the same as Shingle Landing is. If you look at the cases in North Carolina, Mr. McCree spoke about them a little bit, all of the cases involve a use which is different than the use in the area. It's a, an asphalt plant in, in a single-family area, a landfill, a multifamily. What you have here, if you actually look at your standard, is the same use next to each other, so we believe that that's met. We also realize that there are some commercial uses across the street, and that this new single-family development, we don't believe will change, do anything, it's not inharmonious in any way. But if you do look at that, Mr. Woody's analysis, and I know the question was asked, is, is twenty percent enough, is twenty-one percent enough to make it harmonious? It's our position that, based on the data that was submitted, that there are other lots that are this same size. The average lot size is one point five, but as far as being less than a half an acre, there are a good number of lots in the area that are less. If you look at the lots that are next to Shingle Landing, they're all over a half an acre. We also think that the buffer really adds to the harmony of the area. Now, the third factor has to do with compatibility with the land use plan, and we think that's important as well. This is what's known as a full-service area under your land use plan. And that specifically says that if sewer's available, density should be two units an acre. This is, of course, under, is lower than that. It can be three to four if, if you have the amenities. So the staff report also goes through those land use plan, planned provisions, and shows each one that is furthered by this project. So far, there is nothing that has, has shown a land use plan policy that is not. The last factor is also dealt with by Mr. Woody's report, that there are adequate public facilities, he's got the count of the students and, and the like. What we would like to do is, we are here to try to do a good project, a positive project, that the UDO encourages through the conservation subdivision process. We have, there has been some discussion that, you know, you're moving target, you're changing things. The reason that this plan has been modified is because the applicant has listened to the concerns of the neighbors and has tried to change it to address those. Now, there was a subdivision that was never, ever came to fruition in the past, when the first rezoning was done, that had less lots, but that was before sewer was available, and it was before the UDO. So this is something that is now encouraged by the land use plan and is allowed by the UDO, and we hope that you'll consider the evidence and find that this is a worthwhile project that meets your standards. Now, what I'd like to do now is just turn the floor over. We've got three witnesses, Jason Mazel, who is the engineer, and I would like to let him come up here first and present his testimony.
My name is Eddie Hyman, and I work with Hyman and Robyn. I'm here to address some of the technical aspects of the project, and y'all have seen me many times before. And I'm gonna repeat basically what I've said before. We have used the UDO, which is our rulebook for development in the county, to bring this project to where it is now. Started with a community meeting, where we showed the residents and had mailings to the area, all the residents adjoining the property within some of the hundreds of feet, at, at the Moyac Library. We showed them the layout, rough layout of what we had, what we were planning to do, and got input from that. So we communicated well with the neighborhood, we tried to. Took input from that meeting and made modifications to the plans, and, and it's been kind of a perpetual modification to get to where we are tonight. As you know, that this, this is a preliminary plat use permit without permits, and what it does, it vests us in our plan without us having to spend the design money, the studies on traffic, the stormwater full design, we just, we come in with a concept, so we can spend the money to do the full design. The UDO requires that our pre and post runoff, the stormwater issues that we were talking about, my post-development runoff will actually be less than the, at the existing development runoff now, per the new Keratuck Stormwater Ordinance. It's, and the county's engineering staff will review it, the soil conservation, which Mike Dox is here, he'll review it and make sure it meets the standards. The technical review staff that is part of the planning staff extension involves DOT's input, fire, EMS, rescue, the traffic. DOT's already actually looked at this project, we've already gone to them about it, but they will be pulled in full steam ahead when it's time for us to come forward with the full design. We've met everything that the ordinance spells out for us to do, and that's, that's where we are here tonight. So I'll be available for any questions that you might have.
I just had a quick follow-up question. Can you explain what the DOT driveway permit process is and what will, will be done at that time?
Yes, we will have to apply for a driveway permit and an encroachment agreement to put our infrastructure within the roadway. They will review the safety, they'll review it from many aspects, construction standards, safety, and positioning of the driveway as they review it and issue their permit. But they, as well as issuing that permit, review the overall subdivision roads within the subdivision for their design criteria and traffic flow and things like that.
Members of the board have any questions for Mr. Hyman?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Petry?
First question, have you, last time you were here, you had a deal on wastewater. I'm assuming that deal has changed, and now you're going to go down Tolles Creek Road?
We're gonna extend it down the roadway.
You've gotten the permit from the railroad yet?
No, we have not. We, this is not a permit drawing. We will, we will get the permits to jack and bore under the railroad.
But there's no guarantee, I think, on that permit?
There's no guarantee, no.
Okay. The second question, on a traffic study, to me, it's the prudent thing to do, to do the traffic study before you approve it, because once you approve it, how's the traffic study, you can't revert back.
The traffic study was not part of our requirement for submittal. We will make it part of our approval.
But public safety is?
Public safety is, and we-
Okay, what I'm saying is, in my opinion, public safety could be affected by the traffic, and that's why I'm talking about a traffic study.
Well, we have already gone to DOT, and as Mr. Woody reported, that all the adjoining roads are at about half-capacity. And even if you take the highest trips per day that'll be generated from these ninety units, we're not going to get anywhere near that on the, impacting the capacity of the streets. So, and that's the, the, what we put together.
Yes, sir.
Eddie, I think one of the things that was brought up earlier, Shingle Landing Road has, has not been done. And, I mean, they, they took a like street, Camellia or something, and-
Well, they, they, the way they do the traffic analysis, they'll do, they'll pick a selected number of roads every year and do a, a annual study, not just a daytime report, or a one-day deal, they'll do an average for the whole year. They won't just, and they'll formulate data on probably a third of the roads every year, and then they publish that data.
Mr. McCray brought up a good point, though. Shingle Landing, due to the school and the children and everything else that's there, is not a, is not a, a regular. That's, that's an exceptional traffic area because of the-
Right.
The, the mission and the use of what's there.
And I'm not denying that, and we're also, like I said, we're offering to do a traffic study.
And his traffic study was two thousand and twelve?
The counts that I referenced were two thousand and twelve DOT counts.
So roughly two years ago.
Those are the most recent available.
I guess my, my question on a traffic study is for, what purpose after you get approval is a traffic study going to change anything? If the traffic study comes back and says, we got a problem, we've already got your approval. That's, I think that's what Mr. Petry was trying to get to.
When, when DOT reviews the plans that they will, they've already seen them, we put them in front of them, they will recommend, if, if needed, turning bays, storage bays for the entrance of the road, decel lanes and things of that nature. Again, the-
So I, I guess what we're saying is, is a, a traffic study would give recommend, if there's, it will determine if there's a traffic issue, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if it is, it will make recommendations as to improvements that can be made which will remedy that situation, is that correct? So what the, what the-
Those improvements mean less lots?
The improvements would be, as I understand it, what we're saying is whatever those improvements will be will be according to this particular plan.
I know, but could it mean less lots?
No, it wouldn't. I mean, I'm not a witness, no.
If they prescribe improvements, it would be to, to facilitate the lots that we have proposed.
But it's still, if you have one car per lot, and, and the traffic study says it's crowded, then you say the, one of the options is not less lots, which means less cars.
When, as DOT sees the need for improvements on their roads, they make improvements, just as they've done down by the fire station, and they, they will take, they will make needs, sometimes they will ask the developer to participate in some of those needs. Now, a resolution, you know, you, the, but this traffic study will prescribe a, either determine whether or not there's a need for improvements, or whether or not it's adequate.
Nope. My, I mean, nobody that, that lived, if, if it was a Shingle Landing, nobody's going south. They're all going to go out at that stop sign, which, you know, like I said, I mean, there's a lot of, of traffic, you know, from Moyac Automotive, from Moyac Elementary School, when they dropped their kid off and they're going to Virginia, and if we had five hundred and sixty new trips at that stop sign, and, and I don't work for DOT, I don't do traffic studies, but I'd be willing to bet I could get within fifty, fifty people have traveled through it in the daytime, and it's probably in, in the mid-threes to low fours, you know, currently, on that little, that little small stretch over the bridge by your client's property. So I mean, you're, you're talking about almost, you know, I mean, definitely doubling it, you know, seventy percent more, at, at just a stop sign on a-
Well, as we've-
Well, your firm has consulted with NC DOT to get these numbers, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
And based on what your firm has determined, based on those conversations, you do not know, it's your position that NC DOT has no problem at this time, is that correct?
We have, we have communicated with NC DOT, and they have let us know that the layout we have, the intersection that we designed is okay with them, and actually-
NC DOT starts working at eight o'clock, Monday through Friday. That road, seven, seven, elementary school starts at eight o'clock, that road, I'm, I'm just saying, that's, that, that road at seven forty-five, you know, I mean, I challenge anybody in this room, ride up there tomorrow and do a traffic count. That road has a lot of traffic at that stop sign.
Well, there are experts to go to.
Yes, sir.
Just, just one simple question and a half. Cause, I mean, okay, you got these, these four, five different changes here. Has this been shared with the public, does that, I mean, is this the first time we're seeing it tonight?
This is the first time you've been seeing it tonight.
It was, it was submitted to-
And it was submitted, as, per the comments that we've been hearing.
I understand. I, I, I'm not, I'm not arguing about that.
Well, I know, because we've been chastised about making changes, but we've been asked to make changes.
I'm chastised, and you both making changes. My simple question, there's a lot of public here, and I'm wondering, has this been shared with them yet?
We shared it with Ben Woody on the thirteenth, last Thursday.
And the same thing, I, like I said, it's just the public, I mean, that's, and I'm not trying to beat y'all up neither.
Believe me, we won't, as engineers and surveyors, we take an oath to, to do public safety and welfare as our, as our priority, as we design things. The traffic study, if needed, we can, we can secure one, and we'll make designs according to that, and that's part of our, the, you know, we're trying to get permission to move forward with that, and we don't want to spend all the big money and-
I understand.
And do the stormwater designs, and then still not get our approval. This ordinance was written just for this purpose, so we can come here, this is what we really want to do, let's throw rocks at it and see what we got to do to fix it and make it so it can be buildable, and then we go to work designing it. And the traffic study, just like we said, we can incorporate that as part of our approval for the preliminary permit, preliminary plat with permits.
And if the traffic study says no improvements are warranted, none would be made, is that correct? Cause there would be a determination by NC, by whoever the traffic engineer, that it was safe.
That's correct.
But if there was some improvement needed to make it safe, what you're saying is that would be done?
We would take the advice of the traffic study in our design.
So if they were to say, put a traffic light at Shingle Landing Road and 168, you'd do that?
That's not going to be on them.
I, I think what, can-
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, that's-
Let, let me, let's, let's get this, state your name.
David Jenna Scully, Virginia Beach, Virginia.
Okay, and tell them, and what is your role in this?
I'm the, I'm one of the owners of the property and the developer.
And are you willing as a condition of development to make the improvements that a traffic engineer would?
If a traffic engineer were to assess the property and to come back and say, we need to either put in decel lanes, potentially a stoplight, that would be part of the condition of approval. That would be added in order to approve the site. If we didn't add it, then the site wouldn't be approved, so that's part of the condition of, of the-
We've been trying to get a traffic light up there for three years.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, was it at this, this intersection or the one up a little bit further?
It's a little further.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Hyman. Mr. Hyman, in your expert opinion, in past developments to this caliper, have you seen DOT put in turn lanes, you know, additional safety, and, I mean, I'm sure you've-
Yes, we've seen them do decel lanes.
And what are some of the improvements, what are the, some of the other specifics that are required?
Well, depending on the-
In your, in previous-
We've, we've had to put right turn in decel lanes, we've had to put a third lane or a center lane on some roads when the traffic would exceed it. We polled DOT, and they, they don't, at this point, they don't think it'll need any of that, those improvements, where the sight distances are on the road and with the ability to, for the traffic to move where it is. But if they come back and say that, like I say, storage bays, decel lanes, right-ins or right-out only sometimes, but these are recommendations depending on the road, but since this is a, it's a two-lane road, it gets high traffic from school use and things like that. They, like I said, they've reviewed it once, but it, it can be any kind of recommendation. It may, we may have to dedicate more roadway off that side for widening, which we've left enough open space there to do so.
What's the, I mean, like, far as the DOT study, and, and he said the last one was in two thousand and twelve, I mean, did you just say it's in two thousand and twelve? Was it, you know, a Monday night at ten o'clock, I mean, you know, what's the, I mean, there's no date, no-
Well, they do it every year, and like Eddie said, they, they select a, a certain number of roads, and, and 168, they're going to count every year. And, and the output, the number is the average annual daily traffic count, so it's supposed to be a representation of the typical traffic volume a road would have, it's not intended to be-
Now, see, this is different in trips per day. The traffic is, the car goes by one time, bam, bam, bam. So a, somebody taking the child to school is going to get, is going to trip it twice. The trips per day is a, is, is actually a trip out, trip back, but DOT, they monitor their- But DOT, they monitor their, their roads for their improvements. They monitor, they do these studies, and it's not just, they don't go out there on a, you know, lunchtime and throw it out there for an hour, okay, we've got this many trips times 24 hours, that's, that's it. They, they do a detailed study every year, and they do it on about a third of the roads, and they, they publish that data. You, you can go to the DOT's website and see the traffic analysis maps. And, and like I say, some are 2012, some are 2013. They'll be coming out to 2014, near the end of 2014, because it takes more than, like I say, it's not just one, one analysis they take. They take it seasonal, they take it during different times of the day, high traffic times and low traffic times.
Mr. Hyman, and to back that up a little bit more, to, to continue with the question that I had on safety, I mean, first and foremost, safety is my concern. And, and looking at, you know, you guys have changed the, the plans from when you had proposed four exits, and you've put the cul-de-sac in. Another concern is, in this same consideration of study, in your expert opinion, is it Crossings Avenue that's the, the, the long thoroughfare with the two, three stop intersections? I, I mean, you know, you've got driveway cuts there, so, again, those are some very, very big concerns that I have as far as the safety of just that road, because it's going to add, you know, like I said, you know, 94 homes in addition to the, the traffic. So, I think that that needs to be also added into that consideration, if that's in the traffic study, because of the driveway cuts that you've got right there at the entrance.
There's lots, our, our initial layout had no lots fronting on that road. But with the, the road, I think, would be maybe a little wider to accommodate thoroughfare traffic as well as the curb cuts that are on the road. All of our neighborhood streets, other than the dead end cul-de-sacs, have thoroughfare traffic on them. Like I say, safety is a, is a concern. The speed, speed limits on this road are going to be neighborhood speed limits, not highways type speed limits. It's a fairly straight road that will give a good, clear visual as, at access points.
Mr. Hyman, I got a scenario I want to throw out at you. I'm sorry, my needle's stuck on safety. Saturday morning, 10 o'clock, headed north. Traffic is backed up to Sawyer Town Road, Eagle Creek. A shortcut is down Sawyer Town Road, to Tulsa Creek Road, to Shingle Landing Road, through the stop sign to a stop, to the stop sign at the highway. You're familiar with that?
Oh, yeah.
I've done it. Going to work. It's like a parade. What concerns me is what Commissioner McCord talks about. One of the things that Commissioner Gilbert has talked about, traffic trying to get out of ranch land on Saturday morning, that they have to take a right, if they can get out, to go down and make a left U-turn to come back. Now, my concern is this. Shingle Landing Road is at a 45, coming into the highway, to 168. You agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So, you can imagine trying to look back over your shoulder and count cars Saturday morning, 10 o'clock. Traffic studies go out the window, because we have argued to get traffic lights, whatever, to do a traffic study for, for ranch land, to do counting cars on Saturday morning. And they do it, but they do it in December. Okay. This is a major, major concern, because I see a problem, in my opinion, of having driven that road, have, going, trying to get out of, through Moyac and go down Sawyer Town Road, dump, 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 front of the school stop sign. People don't even stop for the stop sign. It boom, hit it, let's go. Because you know what? When you get down there, they even go to the point of cutting through the shopping center. You know why? I've done it. Because I don't want to sit in traffic to get out of the stop sign. Now, all your traffic studies in the world, to me, this is a huge, huge public safety issue.
Yes.
And that scenario, I guarantee you, if you're familiar with the area, and anybody out here can, can vouch to what I'm saying, anybody up here can vouch what I'm saying. And you come into a road at a 45 degree angle, and you've got 10,000 cars coming out of there, and you know what? They're trying to get back to Pennsylvania. There's an old say, old saying, LAPD, locals against Pennsylvania drivers.
Town highway.
And that, I mean, if you can get a traffic light there, more power to you. But you know what? I think if they, they talk about traffic study, and you go to put a traffic light there, you're going to get the same answer that we've got for the last three years at ranch land, shingle landing, everywhere else.
Well, at the same time, at the community meeting, the EMS and the buyer told me that this, if we, if the interconnected road went all the way through, it would increase their response time because of just what you said. It would make it safer on the citizens in Shingle Landing, because they don't have to get on that highway to get, to do a service, to do an emergency call. It gives the people in and out, it, so, it would benefit. Now, I'm not arguing that Highway 168 is a traffic nightmare, because I've tried to get up and down those roads on Saturdays and Sundays myself. We're trying to, and now, doing an analysis on the impact of these, these lots to the, to the, the big picture. The, the studies say that that road should have capacity. Now, Saturdays, Saturdays and Sundays, well, and if this track was twice the size, and I was still getting 90 lots, we're, we're going to be impacting it just as much. I know, you know, you've got development coming, you've got Cypress Landing, which is just down the road. Development is coming, the traffic needs to be studied. DOT typically will address it as, after it's needed, not before. But, that's, they, but, we, this, this subdivision, like I said, DOT is part of the TRC staff, they will review this, and they will see what we need to do on our particular road.
Mr. Hyman, Mr. Martin has a question for you.
Okay.
Okay. Change the subject just a little bit, and looking at subdivision here. You've been doing building here for over 20 years, I guess, Eddie. Have you ever built a subdivision with this, what could I say, density in the Moyac area? Do you know of any?
I've not built one. I've built them in Elizabeth City, where sewer's available.
Have you ever built one in any part of Currituck? Do you know where one is outside of the Outer Banks on the mainland?
There's, I believe there's one in Grandy that's got a high, a high density. It doesn't have this many lots, but it's got a high density.
But that's, that was a campground that-
No, it's, it's a subdivision just south of Walnut Island, that, the bomb property there. And I didn't build it, but I was pointed to it as a, as a guide, actually. It has high density lots. When I say high density, it has smaller lots. This, and this is something, this is not really considered a high density subdivision.
Okay.
This is low density, per standards that come from planning and, and state levels. You're less than two units per acre, and it's still considered low density.
I'm still stuck on that 79%. And it's, you know, and I can't get an answer to it. And that's, that's what bugs me about this, and-
Well, but to answer your question, though, with sewer, without sewer available, the soils up here would not support lots any smaller than 20, 25,000 square feet.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions about commissioners for Mr. Hyman?
No.
Ms. Curran, you have any-
Just follow up real quick. The, the estimated increase in trips is 552, is that correct?
That's correct.
And based on the information you have and your experience as an engineer, will that cause a traffic issue in this area?
Based on the DOT capacities for the adjoining roads, I would say no.
Okay. And all the information that you have is that this additional number of trips will not cause a traffic safety issue, is that correct?
That's according to the, the authorities from DOT that we rely on for these, for this expertise, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms.-
Thank you.
Ms. Curran, do you have any other witnesses?
Good evening. My name is Butch Boykin, I'm with Rose and Wumble Realty, I'm from Newport News, Virginia. And I've been with Rose and Wumble 23 years as a new home sales agent and sales manager. My company currently markets Cypress Landing, we did Creekside Estates, we did
Eagle Creek, we're down in Wolf's Landing, we've done several communities in North Carolina, and we'll do several more. I did, I prepared a brief report, I may be a little short on copies, I apologize for that, commissioners.
He'll pass them down.
I'm here to speak on the topic of harmony and any harm to the existing, the values of existing homeowners around the proposed project. It is our opinion that, as was already mentioned, that single family homes are going to be built, and that's what's surrounding the neighborhood now. It is in harmony with the project and the rest of the neighborhood. Also, the, the concept of value being harmed, it, in the, as you see in the cover to letter, I'll tell you what's in there. There's a kind of a conclusion page. We have a firm residential databank that prepared this report, the two-page report, and then there's a chart attached on the fourth page, and then some backup data on the fifth and sixth page. What we, in what we do for a living in selling and marketing new homes, we, what tends to happen pretty much all the time is that value is established within the existing neighborhood that the properties are being transferred in. As you can see, if you look at the single family residential value comparison, we did Shingle Landing, Cates Court, Cypress Landing, Creekside Estates, Fox Run, Eagle Creek, Ranchland, and Quail Run. And you can see quite a bit of disparity between the homes in the existing neighborhoods and the existing homes in that neighborhood. And we feel that when properties are transferred and appraisers are doing value compilations, that that's the property they're using. The, the project you are looking to, that we would like you to approve, is going to range from 2,000 to 3,000 square feet. There's quite a few options that can make those homes bigger, sunrooms. We also, curb appeal, we're adding wraparound porches. They're going to be a fiber cement siding on the exterior. So, we feel all of those things are added value components that will make this property pretty outstanding. Our average sales price, we're looking at around 297 in that range. That's a, between the high and the low. And when final sales prices will close some in the 350 range, we'll close some in the 270 range. But it is our opinion that the values are established by homes in the existing neighborhoods that they are, that the appraisers are using themselves. They're not coming, they wouldn't come to Moyac Crossing to do a value for a house in Shingle Landing. They would use properties in Shingle Landing to, or Eagle Creek, if they were doing one in Eagle Creek, to establish that value.
Any questions for Mr. Boykin?
I have a question. You're in the real estate business.
Yes, sir.
Do you know currently how many homes are under foreclosure in the Moyac area?
No, sir.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did you say you're a licensed North Carolina appraiser?
No, sir, I did not.
So, you are not an expert in appraising property?
No, I'm an expert at sales and marketing.
Sales and marketing.
And this data-
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Boykin from the board?
The, the target price is, is a little different from what I heard last time I looked.
Oh, yeah.
No, what that number is, is a, an average of the base prices, including an anticipated option, what people will buy. We look at people buying 10 to 13% in upgrades between flooring and sunrooms and options like that.
I was, yeah, I'm just trying to find it, I can't find it, but, well, certainly, because I heard somewhere around 200.
No, no, sir.
Mr. McCree, I have a question for you.
Yes.
As-
230.
As we-
The average value of home combination lots will be 230,000.
As we deliberate on this, and we're talking about appraised value, should we not be taken from a licensed North Carolina appraisal, what the appraised values and, and comparison should be?
I believe that, Ms. Curran may get ready to tell you, I believe there are some cases that allow for real estate value testimony from a real estate agent.
The, the law says it can't be a lay witness.
That's correct.
So, that does not mean, if it is a person who has expertise in valuing buying and selling real estate, then they're competent under the statute. And that's why I was going to ask you to just give you a little bit of your background and experience.
Although, let me just say to the board, you, you may weigh their experience, and, and what he's going to, I guess, ready to tell you is whether that's sufficient foundation for you to make a determination of expertise.
Yeah. All the data that was tabulated was taken from Navica and Rain and court records from Currituck. And there was, we didn't, we didn't, we're not establishing appraised value of any of the homes. We're just pulling data that is available to the public.
Can, can you state that your experience and background in, in buying and selling, that would give you expertise to determine whether the impact, there would be an impact on value?
Yeah. Like I, I stated, I've been a licensed salesperson and sales manager for 23 years with this company, and I feel my experience would, allows me to speak on that, this topic would, the, this community would not harm the value.
How many, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Actually, it's going to be a two-part question. Like I said, I'm not trying to beat you up or anything neither.
That's all right.
Are you a licensed North Carolina Realtor?
No, sir.
How many, so, so you're not even a licensed North Carolina Realtor?
No, my, we have a-
I know you'll have-
We have Scott Ayers as a broker in charge that is a licensed North Carolina that we operate under.
So, you're basing all your stuff on, I mean, like I said, you, you have never sold property in North Carolina?
No, sir, I haven't. My company has, but not, yes, sir.
And what about properties in this area that your company has marketed?
Well, we just, we're finishing up Cypress Landing, we have two homes left to sell in there. We just finished Creekside Estates, we sold most of Eagle Creek. And so, we've been in the North Carolina market for quite a few years.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen your signs, or your company signs in Moyac.
I have one last question.
Yes, sir.
Is Rose and Wumble in contractual relationship with the developer?
We market the developers' community in Portsmouth currently.
And you, will you be marketing this one?
We, we are hoping we will be marketing it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for this witness?
Nope.
Ms. Curran, you have any, any questions based upon the questions asked?
Do you have a, your data?
This is a copy of what we used to compile the data, would you?
Mr. Woody. And, and thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Hi, Ms. Curran, any other witnesses? Again, my name is David Jenna Scully, I'm the developer and the property owner. There's been some discussions about the price of the houses. And what I did was I came together and, and put together some packages. I, I think I have enough, I have 10, so that should be enough. Okay, the names on the homes are similar to the names that we're using in Portsmouth, so we took those houses and we've modified them a bit for down here. You'll see that there are three models. The smallest there is 1,900 square feet, or 1,908 square feet. We're looking at marketing that at 249.9, that is the starting price. That's before you get into any type of lot premiums or any type of options. That house will probably sell for about $270,000 when it's done, which is very similar to what happened over at Cypress Landing, right around the corner. The Currituck model that you see there is 2,650 square feet, and that house will start at about 275 to 279.9. It all depends on, obviously, when we hit the market. That house will also offer lot premiums as well as options. That house will get close to 299 to 300,000. The other model you see there is the Hatters. That Hatters model has a downstairs master, so that, that one will be close to 2,750 square feet. That model will start at about 289.9 and run well over 300 with lot premiums and options. That's a very popular model since it's a first floor master. All of them have two car garages. We've added, as we started to grow the lots in size, we've added a 3,000 square foot model. That, that one has not, is not in that package, doesn't have the pretty pictures yet, it's in the design phase. And that one will start at, or right above 300,000 and approach 340 with lot premiums and options. Those, you know, are, what we're looking to do at this community, as you see, they're very aesthetically pleasing. You know, we're in the business to sell houses, we're in the business to put up a shack- You know, we're in the business to sell houses where it is business to put up a shack to try to just, you're not going to have anybody buy those. You got to have something that people want. Ranches are extremely popular right now. Folks want first-floor master bedrooms, going up the stairs, gets old after a while. But there are traditional people who want a traditional house. And that's what you see in that Curtaut model. These are close to what we're selling in Portsmouth. In Portsmouth, the difference is, I guess, the wraparound porches and things like that, we've added also, and these are larger than what we sell in Portsmouth. And that's basically the, the exterior of the houses will have brick, hardy plank is, which is a cement board. Brick options, you can do either brick around the front. It will have brick around the garages, you see in most of those. There will be options to put brick and pretty much brick the whole house. That's basically what I have. Open for questions.
Chairman, just to let you know, I was, I was looking in the submitted Moyauk Crossing development impact statement, talking about physical analysis. It says, expected that the homes will be between 1,400 and 2,400 square feet in size post-construction lot, home and lot values at today's cost will be 180 to 280.
Yeah, that was, correct. And that was almost a year ago. And as we're decreasing the amount of lots and increasing the, you know, there is a rate of return that all investors look for. So as we start pushing it, as we start talking about the market, the market's a lot better now than it was three years ago, two, or, yeah, over three years ago when we started looking at this project. So as the market becomes better, prices of houses can rise, size of houses can rise. In a downturn market, you, if you're going to stay afloat, you have to sell what is available or what you can, you can sell. Selling a 4,500-square-foot home in 2008 for $700,000, you're not going to survive. So those have changed. That's what we're looking to market. That's what, if we go with Rose and Wamble, that's what the initial prices will be. And we, obviously, if I could sell a house for $450,000, I would sell a house for $450,000. However, that's what we feel will generate enough attention and enough traffic in there to sell, to start selling those houses. And then the job of the Realtor is to mark up and sell hardwood or stainless steel appliances and so forth.
Don't get me wrong, I didn't want to see 1,400 square foot.
Okay.
I'll tell you that.
Well, the 1,908 is very similar to what was sold, the smallest house sold over in Cypress Landing, which seemed to go, was a popular development. And that is a full ranch. Everything is on the first floor, which again, is a popular home coming back. Cause for a while there, that wasn't where people were looking to go.
Thank you.
I have two questions for you. First of all, you're comparing apples to apples as far as your development in the Portsmouth location. And I'd like to know approximate location of Portsmouth where that is? And what, the number of lots that you've built in that development?
Okay. That is, it's a different development, but I'll explain where it is. It's on the, it's on the Western Freeway. It borders, or it's very close to Suffolk. It's a single-family condominium. So what that is, is the lots are small, okay? But you pay a fee and everybody, and everything is maintained on the outside of your house. So it's like a condominium, it's like a townhome, but it's single-family. So there's a condo fee of $150 a month, and that takes care of cutting your grass. It's a gated community. It takes care of your outside insurance. You basically get interior insurance like a renter's policy. So that 100, and it has a lake, it has a guardhouse, it has the amenity, a clubhouse. So, but those houses are also smaller than this. What we did is we took the exterior of the houses and some of the interior details that were popular with the home buyers and expanded, basically, those houses are the Portsmouth houses on steroids. They're bigger, they're roomier because of the, and the size of the lots there were smaller. And there were 144 lots in that community.
Okay, so we're not really, as far as being single-family homes, not really comparing apples to apples?
No, no, but I was showing you what those houses are and that are being proposed for this neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming you're going to have an HOA?
Yeah, we're going to have one to take care of. You have open area, you have the BMPs, which are the stormwater management. And then you have some of the buffer areas that are around, so that.
You established what the fees, monthly fees are going to be, your annual?
The annual fees there will be less than $200. Right now, they're floating between 175. Well, you have to, you have to have money, adequate money.
Annual?
Annual, not monthly. You have to have adequate money to repair the BMPs over time. I mean, that is what, over time, those BMPs will fill up and you need to make sure you take care of those. So you have to have money in there. Or you get to the problem where those BMPs, there's no money to take care of that, and that's when everybody comes back to the county saying, "I need money to fix these BMPs." So if you put enough reserve in there to fix the BMPs, you don't have to come back to the county. Yes, sir.
One last question. Have you ever built in North Carolina before?
No, sir.
Do you have your own crews that you bring into an area?
No, sir. We've been talking, we would hire local folks. I mean, we believe in that. We don't, there's no, we don't have a big crew. My, my office is eight people. So I don't have 30 people waiting in the wings to come camp down here.
How about materials?
Materials will be bought locally if we can, and if we can't, obviously not. But if we can buy, if we have a subcontractor that will supply us with all the lumber we need, then we buy all the lumber locally. It makes no sense for me to bring anything else in if I can get it here. Now, if somebody says, "I can't get you windows for six months," then obviously that would be, but the most part is, we're going to be building here. We, we expect to use as many local people as possible. The idea is to, to be part of the community, hopefully, and not be, you know, come in and, I like to build more. I mean, I would love to build here for a long time. I don't plan on being in a housing development for the next year, or house, building development or building business for the next year. I plan on being in it. I'm fairly young, even though I got a lot of gray, but that's just the last two months. But, but the, I plan on building it. So if I do a nice neighborhood here and everybody here likes me after, after a year and a half or two years or three years, then I can come back and say, "I got another project down the road." You will look at me and say, "Well, he's done it." But if I don't start it first, then I'll never be able to come down here. Because it's just, I gotta do one. If I don't do one project, I can't do a second. So this is, this is the first project, hopefully.
Thank you.
Any other questions for this witness from the board? Ms. Curran, do you have any follow-up questions based on questions asked by members of the board? All right, I guess you have no further witnesses?
No, sir.
Okay. And we'll now open it for public comments. And Mr. Chairman, I believe you wanted to limit that to three minutes per person?
Yes, sir.
Eldon Miller?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I don't know if I like being point man, because he's the first one to get shot.
I know all about it.
He's had the last one standing, wasn't he?
And I appreciate Mr. McCree's instructions. That's a lot of stuff to remember, so I'll have to rely on all you lawyers to keep me straight. I'm before you tonight to express some concerns I have about the proposed Moyauk Crossing subdivision being developed by the G Group. And the following is a list of case points for your consideration. The first one's compatibility, or as the good barrister said, harmony, which I like that too, with the adjoining properties and subdivisions. In the compatibility study, most of the half-acre and smaller lots that are shown were probably platted 50 or more years ago. Also too, I'm glad tonight to finally get an idea of what size and quality of houses that we're going to see. It's taken us to get this far to find out what we're going to get. And I was going to ask what the impact will be on our property values if the houses are smaller and of minimum quality, but hopefully they'll be of good quality. The developer, I, things keep changing. My head's about to explode here, listening to the different things that we've had to, you know, the things that keep getting changed around. They presented and sold at the, at the public meeting back originally when the, when it came up for rezoning, they presented and sold a 39-lot subdivision. I don't have any problem with that. That was good. When the project changed, in my opinion, the rezoning approval should have become null and void, and then they should have to, to reapply. Outside of these public meetings and hearings, the developers made no effort to meet with the adjoining property owners, to my knowledge, or to design a plat that everyone near them can live with, listen to our concerns, or make us feel at ease about their project. And when they started increasing the size of things, every time they made a change, it just seemed to come back and poke us in the eye. They have no stake in our community. We're stuck with whatever they leave when they're done and go back where they come from. And I was going to say, they probably wouldn't even leave, use local suppliers and subcontractors, but I was just told that they would, so that's a good thing. But it's one thing I'd probably make a bet on, that if a subdivision of this type would be proposed near their home where they live, they'd probably be in front of their respective Board of Commissioners or City Council with the same concerns we have. Third, connecting to the Moyauk sewer system. This has become a point of contention. If it wasn't for that, we'd be sitting home watching y'all on TV tonight. The sewer system was built and sold to be used for commercial use. However, it never was really promoted. Then you were probably informed by public utilities that we've got a system to pay for and that not many commercial connections are being made. And then the board voted to allow residential hookups without really considering the consequences that we're facing now. Kind of makes me wonder if the planning department had any input.
That's time, Mr. Miller, if you'd wrap it up, please.
Okay.
All right. So anyway, maybe lose my place. I'm sure the board had good intentions, but here we are. And as a citizen, I take partial responsibility. And if I was paying better attention at your meetings, I might have seen this coming. This is a perfect example as to why we, your constituents, should pay more attention to what's going on in our government. Based on the points I've just prevented, I'd like to recommend that we take a look at the rezoning process. Also, explore the amendment to UDO concerning minimum, minimum lot sizes in adjoining subdivisions to require either lots no smaller than 20,000 square feet and/or lot sizes to vary no more than 25%. In order to give all of us time to fix this and to encourage them to come back with a plan that we can all live with, I respectfully request that you deny their request. And yeah, they're probably going to sue us, but I don't think they will. A lawyer I spoke to said that it'll probably take them five years to get to court. So anyway, I'm betting they won't want to do that. My point is, just because it's legal doesn't make it right and doesn't make it good. It's a shame that sometimes we have to force folks to be good neighbors in order to protect our property. The opposition to this project in its present state is overwhelming, and as you can see by the attendance here tonight. Having worked as a stakeholder committee member in the Moyauk Small Area Plan for almost a year and a half, I can assure you that this is not the type of project that we want to see in the place that it's being proposed. Thank you for, thank you for your consideration of my thoughts on this most important and urgent matter. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Miller from the board?
No.
Ms. Curran, you have any questions for Mr. Miller?
No, sir.
All right. Joe Drago?
I thank you for allowing me to be here. And I'll try to make my three minutes. I tried to do some work ahead of time, and I sent every single Curtaut commissioner pictures of flooding in Shingle Landing, where I actually have waterfront property. And I addressed a letter so that, I sent that on January 23rd. Now, hopefully, everybody got it because it didn't come back to me. So you can see that there is a definite water problem in Shingle Landing. Also, as a North Carolina rural state, and I also have my Virginia license, I practice in North Carolina. I used to practice in Virginia back in 2003 to '06 when the money was good, and I'd list there and sell here, but I don't now. And it's a different culture in North Carolina, and that's why I stick to this now, and I use Virginia as referral. I didn't know that these 39 lots was going to be up to 90 until Sherri Duke came around where me would. She passed out these little pictures of 92 homes on the lots and says, "Guess what we're going to be selling? Get ramped up for it." And this was in November. So this, she saw Rose and Wamble. So they, they kind of knew that this was coming, but none of the rest of us did. I also did a comparative market analysis for North Carolina and Shingle Landing only. I know that very well because I lived there. There's 81 lots, about 75 of them have homes on them, the other ones are vacant. The average lot size is .8. The median price on all those lots, because I can use that MLS too, and they, the median price is $336,000. They, the smallest house in that area is to be 1,800 square foot. However, the average square foot is around 2,450. I find it hard, and help me, somebody can help me with the math, but the houses that are proposed in this condensed area is 1,900 to 300,000 square foot. And of the 58 acres, only 26 of those acres can be actually put houses on. So when I just do an average on that, and you could correct me, it's .15. And that makes a lot, 50 times 100, that's a smaller lot that's in Tulsa Bay Colony, because they're 75 by 150. So to put that great big house, 1,900 square foot to 3,000 on the average lot size, and somebody said it back in January, and I'll have to take what they said a little bit better, it's like putting a hippopotamus on a postage stamp. And the one last thing I'd like to address is if 90 homes go in there, and they're two-car garages, and the average homeowner has got two cars, I can't imagine what that place is going to look like on Memorial Day or July or Christmas when people come over to have parties. Where are they going to park all these cars? The lots aren't that big anyway, so they can't pull them all up in the driveways. You talk about safety issues all over the neighborhood. I just can't imagine it. I guess they say, no fools, no fun. But the other thing is, I just pulled this vicinity map, and this thing keeps changing. I just pulled this off last Saturday. And the easement last Saturday showed that the sewer going across Moyauk Landing, and of course, the Shingle Landing owners would have had to give permission, and they didn't. And so.
That's time, Mr. Chairman, just to make note of that.
Incompatible plat, no access to existing sewer. But now I find out that since I already looked at this, they had told Mr. Woody they were going to do it another way. And things just keep changing, but I'll try to keep up with it. But I'll tell you, you, you're making me a better rural state agent, and I thank you.
Members of the board have any questions for Ms. Drago?
No, I have a question for you. Earlier, I asked a question about a licensed appraisal, and I was told we didn't need one. So the board could weigh equally what Ms. Drago said versus the other witness, correct?
I think if you make a determination that both are experts based upon the evidence presented, then you can weigh the testimony as presented between.
Or you could make a case that neither.
Again, if you are unable to find that the foundation and the evidence of their expertise and experience and the manner in which they conducted their study does not rise to a level of an expert, then you may discount it, yes.
Just being fair. Thank you.
Ms. Curran, do you have any questions for Ms. Drago?
Ms. Curran, do you have any questions for Ms. Drago?
Yeah, actually, I do.
Ms. Drago, if you'd please step up to the mic.
Ms. Drago, did you do an analysis with comparables and pull those comparables to determine whether there would be an impact on the value of shingle landing based on this particular project?
The comps that I got, I pulled strictly out of the AAAR MLS. I pulled for every house that, what it sold, not what it was listed, because that makes a difference. I pulled every house and shingle landing, what it sold, and I looked up every square footage on that.
And that's only in shingle landing, is that correct?
Only in shingle landing.
Okay, so you didn't look at any data for other subdivisions that were developed next to a subdivision like shingle landing?
Well, the only ones that would even be comparative to, and I didn't have enough time to do that, would be Creekside, that's right off of Tolles Creek Road, because I didn't want to consider the older ones that are over in Puddin Ridge and those areas, or Eagle Creek. Eagle Creek is a totally different animal.
So, the only values you have are existing values in shingle landing, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have that data with you?
No, I did not bring that data with me, but I can have it for you.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Wendy Shen? Wendy Shen?
Aldebaran.
Okay. Bobby?
Jelliman.
Jelliman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bobby Jelliman, 128 Applewood Drive. One of the biggest concerns with members of shingle landing deals with Moyoc Landing Drive, and we've talked a lot about interconnectivity. It's been part of the SAP. And I believe this development was going to have that interconnectivity, Crossing Avenue, I believe is the name of it, was gonna run from, and if you, Mr. Woody, if you don't mind pulling that map up, it would actually run from Shingle Landing Road all the way across and hit Moyoc Landing Drive. Now, currently, Moyoc Landing Drive is a private road. And I know we've talked a lot about travel and individuals, if they lived here, where they would go. Well, if I'm Joe Moyoc, and I realize that everybody and their brother is trying to get out the Shingle Landing Road, why don't I just go out, Crossing Avenue, to Moyoc Landing Drive, and head up that way? So, now, we've taken the traffic, and we're kinda splitting it, but now, we're on a private road, and we're dealing with residents that are, have dealt, come over a big hurdle, dealing with the developers of this road. We're also dealing with that railroad track, or the railroad crossing, that's a private entity right now. It's not part of NC DOT. So, we're increasing the number of vehicles that are going over that. We're increasing the number of vehicles that goes through that public boat ramp at the end of Moyoc Landing Drive. So, it's a big concern. And I know that they had mentioned that part of it would be, okay, we don't have to extend that all the way out. So, my question would be, if you don't, is there anything written that says, "You have 92 homes or 90-plus homes." Say that something were to happen in that development, and we had to evacuate. How many vehicles are we talking about that have to, that cannot, there's only one way in and one way out, and that's Crossing Avenue. It doesn't hit Moyoc Landing Drive, because they've mentioned that they don't necessarily have to connect, or they mentioned something about the bond to do that. So, I just wanted to bring that up as one point. Another thing that has been discussed is the sewer system about it. And Mr. O'Neill, you stated back on November 4th that the Commissioners did not approve construction of the Newtown wastewater system to induce residential development. And I think you asked, or I know you asked the county manager how this would affect the sewer system, and he said that it would take it to 80 percent capacity. I think at least if this is gonna get approved, that there should be some type of analysis done on that sewer system, because if the long-term goal is to use that system for commercial development, what's it gonna do? What's it gonna leave leftover if we're trying to generate business to come into Moyoc, to come into North Carolina? My last point talks about, and I don't know if there's anything written about max lot usage, kinda like down in the Outer Banks, you can only build on a certain percentage of a lot. And Joe had brought up about the lot size. And what I pulled off the internet, off the Coeur d'Alene County website, it talks about that the average lot size would be 13,030 square feet, which is .29 of an acre. I know we've talked about, Mr. Woody brought up gross, the gross home lot per acre, which to me is just a number. If we're gonna do actual data, it's only that 26 acres that can actually be built on. So, we're talking about, if they're gonna build a 3,000-square-foot house, and he had mentioned ranches, I mean, we're talking about houses that are gonna be 10, 15 feet apart. I mean, there's not gonna be much space, green space. You throw in a driveway, you throw in a deck, you throw in sidewalks. I mean, you have really no footprint left for a yard. I mean, and that's not in harmony with what the rest of all the other neighborhoods are. Again, Mr. Martin, you brought up, I think it was the 76 percent that's between a half-acre and an acre. I mean, that's what all these lots are. And that development, to me, it's like taking New York City and sticking it right in the middle of Iowa.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chairman.
And we're not against them building. We really aren't. And I know you guys probably think the worst thing of us. And to me, it sounds like you guys are very savvy and smart about what they want to do. But you talk about coming in here and trusting you. We'd rather you come in here, build your 39, see what kind of quality work that you do, and then move on and progress and help us develop. So...
Yeah.
I, you know, I know that you guys, you're hearing a lot of things. I know that some stuff has been done in the past, and we're trying to really make up for the future. We just want you to do the right thing, to listen to us. You know, we came here, like you said, Mr. O'Neill, because we wanted to have space. We wanted to be in a rural area. We wanted to get away from that urbanization, and that's why we came to Moyoc. And that's what we want to continue to see happen. So, I thank you for your time.
Board have any questions for that speaker? Ms. Curran, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir, I do not.
My name is Bob Crocker. I live 134 Applewood Drive. I concur with what everybody else has said. One of my biggest concerns is flooding, water runoff. Most of the houses on Moyoc Landing Drive, I think there's quite a few of the owners here, will say that the backs of their property are swampy, but long after, you know, the rain is gone. If anybody remembers the four-day nor'easter that we had in 2009 and drove around, I mean, nowadays, that's not an unusual storm. We've had quite a few two- or three-day nor'easters here. One of the questions I asked before is if they've contacted the Army Corps Engineers. Before they can do anything to wetlands, the Army Corps Engineers has sole right to permit for any wetlands, okay? Whether the county says so or not, they have to get permission from the Army Corps Engineers. And I'm kinda surprised, you know, when we went to the planning board and that, we're going through all this, and the constant changes, within five minutes, we had three sets of drawings from the developer. I'm surprised that we're here today, to be honest with you, with so many questions. I think it should be final plats. We should have our permits. That's what I have to do in Chesapeake and Suffolk with my business. When I come to you, I have to, my i's are dotted, my t's are crossed, I have all my permits, and that's it. If I don't, and they have questions, then I have to go back to the planning board again. They're the experts. You know, when you look at how many houses, like Bobby said, and Joe, about these houses on these postage stamp-sized lots, you look at the amount of runoff, and to say that this is not gonna add anything, you know, I can't figure that out. I kept asking before, what size are the retention ponds? Well, the state will decide that. Well, how can we get permits or approvals when we don't have the basic data? Mr. Woody, do you have that information from the state? I mean, what was gonna be required as far as...
The county's unified development orders will establish the amount of stormwater runoff that must be retained.
But that hasn't been done yet.
They'll have to engineer that within construction drawings.
But you said earlier that the planning board didn't, that was your opinion, that it shouldn't be a problem. But how can you make that assumption when you don't even know? I mean, who is gonna, who is gonna take shingle landing farms, the people from shingle landing farms, when all this runoff, and we think it's gonna be okay, and it's a private road that they have, and the water backs up, damages their road, and that's their responsibility fixed, the same as the owners of shingle landing, okay? When you make a decision, okay, you take the responsibility to protect us. Now, if the water backs up and it damages Moyoc Landing Drive, that's coming out of my pocket and their pocket, not yours, and you made the decision. I still don't think we have enough information to know. I mean, and to say that Shingle Landing Creek can handle it, we have people that their pools are flooding when that creek overflows, okay? A lot of them, it backs up into the yards. All the main drainage ditches back up. I mean, you're welcome to drive in the neighborhood anytime. And I mean, even in previous board meetings, when we were here back two years ago, when we were having a problem, every one of you said, "If you live here, it floods. The water doesn't perk, it runs off, you pray for the best." Okay? Our developer did a good job coming back, cleaning the ditches, but we still have the problems.
That's time, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, finish up, please.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Crocker from members of the board?
I have none.
If not, Ms. Curran, do you have any questions of, do you have any questions of Mr. Crocker, Ms. Curran?
Oh, I'm sorry. No.
All right. That then, do you have any rebuttal based upon evidence presented by the public?
Just one question, if I could call Mr. Hyman back. There was some issue about wetlands permits. Have, can you address that quickly?
The wetland delineation has been done and approved by the Corps of Engineers, also camo verification of their camo wetlands. And we have permits to do the crossings necessary to do Crossing Drive. So, those permits were obtained, actually, under the 39-lot subdivision, and now we have them re-up, because they did expire, and we have them re-approved. But the Corps has been involved in what we're doing already, as we move forward with the plans.
Okay, thank you.
Did you, you said, had they approved it the second way? You said they had approved it before.
Well, they approved it also.
Okay, and the wetlands, okay. Thank you.
That concludes, person that signed up, Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be appropriate to allow a brief summation by the applicant's attorney, and then that would conclude the evidentiary phase.
Okay, I know everyone's tired. Thanks a lot for listening. I would just say that we believe that, based on our evidence, that we've met the required four factors. I think there's been a lot, there's a lot of fears and a lot of concerns, and I think we hear that word over and over again. And the developer would tell you that he intends to do a good, high-quality project, that this cluster, it's not a cluster here, it's called a conservation subdivision, is something that is actually, well, it's where you leave amount of open space. And if you leave a certain amount of open space, then you're allowed to do smaller lots. That's what your UDO authorizes, that is what your land use plan that for future development encourages on this very property, and that the developer read that, relied on it, designed a product that was consistent with what the expectations were or the long-term plans were, and has a high-quality product that they would like to bring to the county, and they'd like to be a good citizen, and we'd ask that you please approve the project. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would then recommend, now that you, for the record, closed the evidentiary phase, and then it'd be up to the board to deliberate and make its determination at this point.
As recommended by the county attorney, we're gonna close the public hearing and ask the board for further comments.
Mr. Chairman, to ensure compliance with review standards of the UDO, I move to continue PB 13-17 with the condition that the applicant secures any necessary permits for a wastewater line extension to serve the development, because I think Mr. Hyman said he had not secured anything from the railroad to go underneath, and everything is based on that. So, that's my motion for a continuance based on this.
Can I add something to his motion?
What traffic?
Reference the public safety, the traffic study.
Well, what we need is a second, and then after you get a second, you can amend his motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a second to that motion.
Have a second, and now would be appropriate for you to amend his motion.
The amendment reference to a traffic study by DOT.
I'd just say, procedurally, if you would need to vote on this amendment to his motion, unless he would allow for the...
No, I think it's right on for the amendment, if we can do that.
Well, I didn't hear the amendment. Could you please restate it?
I'll state it again. I got a little cold. A traffic study needs to be completed also, reference this, you know, prior to coming back to us, based on the, and I'd like to know a date and a time, not just 2014 or 2012.
Well, a current traffic study.
Yeah.
It'd be appropriate, now, you have a motion to amend, to have a second for the amendment, and then vote on the amendment.
Have a second. We have a second to the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, now, it may appropriate to vote, or to entertain discussion and a vote on the main motion as amended.
Okay, are now open for discussion of the main motion.
Of, based on, though permits from the railroad.
Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
So, we approve both amendments? Got it. The amendment and the original motion.
Yep. Take a 10-minute recess. All right. So, we could reconvene. We're gonna move to the next item. Public hearing in action on authorization of incentives for Project Jessica. I believe we have Mr. Peter Bishop here to discuss that with us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you doing this evening? Rest of the board. Thank you for that recess. Appreciate that. I am here to talk to you tonight about the public hearing in action for authorization of incentives for Project Jessica. This is a new business that would be relocating to Coeur d'Alene County with a corporate headquarters. We are in competition with another state for this company. It's important to note that. This company's talking about proposing to create 60 jobs in three years and invest a little under $1 million in that same time period in Coeur d'Alene County. And what we're proposing to do, Coeur d'Alene County is looking to apply for the State of North Carolina Department of Commerce One North Carolina Fund to receive an incentive to assist this company in that relocation to Coeur d'Alene County. That One North Carolina Fund grant is in the amount of $240,000, with $120,000 coming from the State of North Carolina, and the other 120,000 coming from Coeur d'Alene County in the form of a match. So, we are, we can use cash or in-kind services, which would be fees, infrastructure connections, which in this case, we are proposing to do. So, rather than use cash to match the state's money, we're proposing to do an infrastructure project to assist the company that's looking to locate here. Any questions so far?
So...
Yes, sir.
We're not spending money. We're not spending cash. We're looking at, like, wastewater hookup and...
Well, in the end, yes, we are spending cash, but on county-owned infrastructure that will benefit our county-owned projects.
Right.
So, there will be benefit for more than just this end user. There will be benefit for the county at large, generally. A little bit about the One North Carolina Fund that we're applying for. This is a state grant program. It provides cash grants per new jobs that are committed. And again, in this case, we're talking about 60 new jobs. That calculates over to $4,000 per job is what this grant amount is. This is a targeted grant amount. The state does a lot of research on the companies that apply for it, as does the local government. So, these are high-growth industries, these are well-paying jobs, and jobs with good... So these are high-growth industries, these are well-paying jobs, and jobs with good skillsets in the knowledge-based industry. There are strong criteria for the incentives that these companies are applying for, and then there's two special things about the One North Carolina Fund. One, I mentioned previously, in order to apply for this, the company must be in competition, or the community, rather, must be in competition with another community outside of the state for that project, whether it's a new or an expanding business. In this case, we are in competition with another state for this corporate location. And then the second criteria of the One North Carolina Fund, and a very special one, is that the governor of North Carolina, or the governor's designee, which is typically the Secretary of Commerce, must make the announcement for this job creation project, which really leads back to the beginning in the title. This project is called Project Jessica, not because that's an ex-girlfriend of mine, or that's Butch's dog's name, that's a code name. The incentive program itself does not allow us to state the name of the company until the governor makes that announcement. So really, we're, we can't disclose the name of the company, where specifically they're locating in the county, or the industry that they are in at this time.
So there's no guarantee that this is going to happen. This has just got to be approved in order for the state to make the offer and for us to get in the game.
Precisely. Where we're at in the process is the county and the company are applying together to the state for this, for this money. The company's in the process of applying, and the county has their application in. To a certain point, this approval from this board sort of unlocks and allows us to fully apply there, and then the state must make a determination if the company meets all of their requirements and underwriting, et cetera, for this grant program. So this is one step. We're nearing the end of the process, where the announcement would actually come, and the project would start happening here for Currituck County, but we're not quite there yet. The state still does have to approve a final application, and we need final approval of an incentives contract between the company and Currituck County itself, which you will see in your agenda packets on the resolution that we're asking you to pass. That is one of the conditions of that resolution to move forward.
Questions?
Bottom line, if they don't locate here, there's no skin in the game.
That's correct.
And a few details on if the project is awarded. These incentive dollars come only after jobs have been created. The state has a paperwork process where you file an NC 101 form that basically lists your unemployment insurance liability for the year. That tells us how many permanent jobs have been created. So no dollars will be spent on this project from the state or Currituck County unless jobs have been created. And there will be clawbacks built in. State law requires us to insert clawbacks into any agreement we have, so if jobs are not created, we either give the money, get the money back from them, or the money is not given to them in the first place in those cases.
And Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir.
What type of jobs, what kind of pay scale will this company bring to us?
The average annual salary is about $36,000, but the jobs range from the low 30s up until about the, I think, low 50s.
How many did you say, Peter?
60. This agreement, yes, would require them to create at least 60 by 2017. In separate discussions, the company has said they're going to create an additional 40 in the next two years after that, so 100 in five years is what they're projecting.
What will that do for the tax base of the county?
We're, part of the assessment of this project is that staff does what essentially is an economic impact analysis of the benefits of the project, and we see it's going to be a positive, and actually, pretty significantly positive for the community, and that's not just the jobs that are created, but the investment in the local tax base, the spending that the employees have if they, you know, relocate into Moyoc or, you know, Lower Currituck, wherever it is, they're going to spend more money, et cetera.
Top here, buy here, live here.
Of course, there's also a cost to hosting these folks, there's a cost to the incentive itself, there's a cost to the kids they may put through school, et cetera. So the analysis that we do compares the benefit and that cost, and in this case, it's certainly a positive for Currituck County.
And, Mr. Bishop, if I may ask, you said there was one other person we were in, and I mean, I know you probably can't state who that is, but you said there's one other...
State? There is another state that we're competing with for this location, yes. Yes, sir. About as competitive as it gets, down to the wire. This is a required incentive for them to make this location decision, as far as they've told me.
Are the same type of incentives, are you aware of being offered in the...
We're not aware of the exact package. We are aware that there is an incentive package on the other side that is being, you know, worked against us, but yes, in most of these cases, there is a package with the competing community, rather.
Well, I'd like to add to that. When I was on the Economic Development Board, that's one of the things we run into all the time, was other states offer just about everything in the world. I don't like it. I just don't like it at all. However, our state has determined if we're going to be competitive, we also are going to have to offer some things to improve our economy, and the way they've set it up is, is everybody puts a little skin in the game, the state does, and the local community does, and unfortunately, that's the way it seems that we have to compete nowadays. And I do like the fact that we're doing kind of like infrastructure stuff versus, I know a lot of them, they look for property tax relief for 10-year, I think in Elizabeth City, they just did an incentive of property tax, was it 10 years?
Yeah.
10 years of no property tax for a huge mega site out there, so, I mean, it's happening all around us.
Looking at some of the stuff that Virginia Beach offers.
We lost, we lost something to Virginia Beach, as a matter of fact. So anyways, any other questions?
No, I'd like to make the motion.
I have a motion.
Chairman, you need to open a public hearing.
Oh, yes. Public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. We have anyone signed up? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and now the motion's appropriate.
All right, I'll move to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Martin, a second from Commissioner McCord. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Board appointments, Mr. Idlet, I think that's you for the Recreation Board, if you, if you're prepared.
I'm most certainly ready and willing and able.
Jump out there.
Yeah. I'd like to nominate Ryan Hodges from Knott's Island to serve on the Recreation Board.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion from Commissioner Martin, a second from Commissioner Petrie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Commissioners report. Mr. Idlet, you want to go first?
Well, I will, certainly. Couple things. Number one, I want to thank everyone for the turnout that we had in Knott's Island concerning the ferry tolling issues. I want to thank each and every one of you that are here, that was able to attend, that did attend, Marion, you were the only one, you were out of town and out of the state, or out of country, I guess.
I don't get that, but...
But thank you so very much. We had 203 people, 203 show up to speak about the tolling issues. They've done an excellent job. I'm very proud of my community. They handled themselves very well, spoke very intelligently, there was no banter or anything, they were just factual to the point, and got the message across, I believe. Mr. Scanlon, thank you so much for everything that you've done with this and are continuing to do, and hopefully, we can beat this thing before it's all said and done. Mr. Gary Maltebon has put out a website, I asked him to do in the very beginning stages, just for an information-sharing thing and to start, but it's graduated much further than that now. If you go to that website, anyone who would like to write a letter to either the ROP, excuse, ROP, I sound like somebody else, or to the House or Senate Transportation Committee, or to the chairmans of the Board of Commissioners that are within the 10-county region, can go to his website, and he's got a link you can click on, you can write your own email, and it goes directly from you. It sends it automatic, he gave me about a 10-minute lesson in it yesterday, but you can go to that website and find all that information, and it's just very helpful, and we appreciate anyone and everyone who would support us and do that. I think the more they're here, the better off we'll be. So anyhow, that one's done. I'm just wondering, when we do board appointments, when do we suspect, or think that we're going to go ahead and do the Economic Development Board stuff?
Actually, we need to go ahead and do it.
Okay, because I'm ready to...
Not tonight.
Not tonight, but maybe at our next meeting.
I'd like to do that. I have someone that's willing and able and ready and chomping at the bit, so...
At our next meeting, I would like to ask that we put the appointments to the ED Airport Board.
And we're bringing the ordinance amendment as you directed at your retreat for the next meeting.
Okay.
Reference the four.
Yes.
Okay. Well, at least we need to get at least the four seven on there, and then we can talk about the other four. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Petrie?
To go along with what Commissioner Idlet just said, I am the RPO voting member for Currituck County, and I will be voting no on the tolls. And I'm going to go to, they're having two public meetings, one Wednesday night in Hatrous Village, and one Monday night in Ocracoke, and I'll be attending both of those meetings to show support from Currituck County to Hyde County to oppose the tolls. And I think it's very important that we stand together, the counties in northeastern North Carolina, and I've assured Hyde County that I'd be there and voice support and opposition to the tolls on both ferries. So I'll be going to Hatrous and to Ocracoke. The second thing, along with the RPO, I talked to the county manager today and Chairman O'Neil, I'd like to make a motion that I'd be allowed to explore flooding in Moyoc to be handled like a road project, and put that as far as RPO projects that we can look at. Don't know whether we can do it or not, but we don't ever know anything till we try. So I'd like to make a motion that I'd be allowed to explore that, that task, I guess, to look at flooding in Moyoc. I was just talking to some people out there. Moyoc's got some serious issues. I know DOT was out there before, there's some reports, but again, I'd like to be able to explore it. So I'd like to make a motion to be able to, as RPO member, to go before DOT and lobby to improve flooding in Moyoc. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Gilbert?
I just want to, again, thank everybody that is involved with the small area plan in Moyoc. They have made tremendous strides from the beginning of this process to where we are now, and I just, I can't add any additional kudos to our planning staff. Ben, your staff has just stepped up to the plate, and, you know, you've had lots of challenges, and just continue the great work and look forward to that being brought forward to the board. But again, you know, I want to thank each and every person that's participating. We had a public hearing at Moyoc United Methodist Church last week, and had good turnouts, good discussions, and just encourage anyone and everybody that wants to participate and just be, make public comments to please show up and participate.
Mr. McCord?
No comment tonight for me.
Mr. Griggs?
Just kind of maybe more of an observation. We're talking about the ferries tonight, and like Commissioner Idlet said, all of us went over there, and the turnout was large, and that's the way government should work, but I was kind of thinking when I was riding home, that ferry, as well as the other ferry, well, certainly that ferry's been an establishment in this state, in this county, for decades. And this is the rhetorical observation I would make. I just wonder where we are in this state, where after decades, we now try to balance budgets off the things that were established as part of transportation and were taken for granted, and where have we come now, where we are trying to extract that, I guess, that last pound of flesh, if you will, from the residents? I don't know, I'm just opine as to what our state government does that causes us to get in, have to fight for something that we've enjoyed as residents here in this county for decades. And again, that ferry is a, it's no different than a bridge. It really isn't, and transportation is basic. That's one of the basic things that we, we all as citizens should, should enjoy. Anyway, that's just an observation. There were rhetorical questions, all.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, all right, everybody listen up. This is a freebie. Offered at the senior center, your taxes will be done for you. This is not only for seniors, this is for other people who have a problem getting their taxes done. It will be done every Thursday through April 10th. To, you must have an appointment. Call the senior center at 232-3505 and get an appointment. And thank you to Ms. Joanne DeBello, who is on our senior board. She will be doing that volunteer work to do your taxes. And now, like I say, this is for seniors and anyone else. Now, this precludes corporate taxes and/or the long forms. So it's something you can take advantage of if you have, you know, a problem with your taxes. Please call and make an appointment.
Just one question. This is for people that have problems filling out their taxes. Have we got anything out there for people that have problems paying their taxes?
Good question, and I'm sure there are a lot of those out there, as well as maybe some here.
Kind of manager might can float you a loan.
Yeah, but his...
I see he's got a new truck out there, so...
Yeah, but I'm afraid his interest rates might board on usury, I don't know.
He's got to pay for that new truck.
Well, I have a couple of things. Number one, if we had a flat tax, you could do your taxes on a postcard, and it'd be very simple, and get the government out of, much out of your life. Second thing is, is talking about the tolls and the ferries. North Carolina has one of the, you may not, may not know this, North Carolina has one of the highest gas taxes in the south, southern part of the United States, because we've never had tolls. You go into Virginia, where their tax rate is much less, they make it up with tolls. Now, we're going to have the highest tax rate plus tolls in North Carolina, and not only is the Knott's Island ferry going to be told, if people lay back and watch that happen in these other counties, they're going to find their roads and expressways and bridges told as well, and still keep the high gas tax. The second thing, second thing is, is I want to thank everyone for the cards and letters and phone calls and everything with the loss of my father, and just reestablishes why I love this county so much, and the people of this county, they are kind, they are generous, and even if they disagree with you politically, they still care about you as a person and your family, and this is just a great place to live, raise your family, and retire and grow old. So thanks to everyone, and God bless you all. Mr. Scanlon, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Got it.
We have a motion from Marion.
That's fine.
Ms. Gilbert, and a second from Mr. Idlet.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed can stay.